Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, May 26, 2021. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge. If we all please stand. Mrs. Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Barnaby, could say the prayer for us?
Please join in our invocation. Eternal God, we pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us. Lord, make your face shine upon us and be gracious to us. We pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. We pray that this meeting brings good things to our community. Let our actions in this meeting be valuable to our aim, which is to build up, edify our community, and to bring everyone together. And together, let the people say, amen.
Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Beauchamp?
Good morning. We do have a proclamation this morning that I'll read on your behalf. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, June 7 through 11, 2021. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances; and whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the jobs that they do in saving lives and improving neighborhoods, every day, assisted by support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed, even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise; and whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their jobs seriously and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, is mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of June 7 through 11, 2021, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, and urge all citizens to express appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the code enforcement officers. Sign Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here that wants to accept that?
Mayor and council, thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for all your...
Come up. Everybody come up. You catch a lot of grief at times. You might as well get some good.
We are thankful for all your support throughout the year. We're down one code enforcement officer. We have a position posted. I started interviewing some individuals. So this is our code enforcement staff, Kimberly, Nisha, Jermaine, and Mike. Thank you very much for this, and have a great day.
Thank you for all you do. Anyone comments or good things? I mean, I know you don't always get to go out to do all the good things, but we appreciate what you do and stay through it. And I know mostly it's complaints, but thank you for taking care of our city. Patrick?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I thank you guys. You know, Ward 3's got a lot of code issues. I know that, you know, neighbors are want their neighbors to be policed, but they don't want to be policed themselves. I think you guys are giving a losing proposition. And just so funny, yesterday I was walking with my wife around a neighborhood, and county animal control was there, and, you know, which I, similar to you guys, I said, "There's no good can come of that. It's going to be a losing argument anyway you get into it." I said, "Just like code enforcement. You guys unfairly take a lot of heat that you don't deserve. I think you don't get the respect you deserve." But please know, I appreciate everything you do, and so do the quiet majority of the citizens that we don't hear from.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great day. Mrs. Beauchamp, any presentations?
Not today.
All right, and I'm going to call on Councilman Roth. He had some concerns.
Yes, thank you, sir. My phone has been pretty active with calls complaining about sewer smell, and everyone's assuming it's coming from, everyone's assuming it's coming from our waste treatment plant at 17th Avenue. And I've just been informed that we have some information from our public works director. I think we need to get that out there right away.
Just over the last week or so, we've gotten the same calls. We've driven around, and there's a certain smell that comes from a wastewater treatment plant. Normally, it would be either a methane smell or a sulfur smell. What's out there right now is not that. So we started driving around town, and I think we've identified that the possible or most potential source for it is the wastewater plant at the Tropicana production facility. We've actually been contacted by the Department of Environmental Protection about complaints, and we informed them of that. So we've relayed the information to the Department of Protection that the source of the odor is coming from one of the wastewater lagoons at the Tropicana facility. So we're relying upon them to follow up with them. Unfortunately, the property is in the county, so we don't really even have any say-so on it. But that's, we continue to smell it, and it's partially due to our extended period of no rain. I mean, basically, for the whole month of May, we've had no rain. So an open lagoon like that is exposed and drying out to a certain extent.
Is there, is there anyone, so we haven't contacted Tropicana personally? Is there anyone that should do that, or?
I mean, I haven't contacted anybody there yet, but I can certainly do that.
Just in case they're not aware?
I'm pretty sure they're aware because they drove our people up the property.
Since you mentioned no rain, can you say what the reservoir level is?
Yeah. Just to give you an idea of how that relates to, you know, the no rain for a month, our reservoir went from, at the beginning of the month, to overflowing the dam, to now being about 15 inches below the dam. Most of that is usage, but a lot of that is also evaporation. And to counterbalance that, we're actually in recovery mode from our ASR. So we're offsetting a little more than a million gallons a day of withdrawal from the reservoir with water we're pulling back out of underground storage from our ASR.
Jim, can you kind of give a quick synopsis of the ASR wells? Because we have new council people up here, just a real quick.
Okay. ASR stands for Aquifer Storage and Recovery. In the case of our well at the water plant, we produce excess water through the treatment plant, so it's completely treated water, and we store it in an underground bubble, if you will. Basically, it's, you put fresh water into a brackish environment underground, and there is a chemical separation that occurs between the brackish water and the fresh water that we're putting down. So we're able to store that water underground and then recover it during dry periods, like this. That's the perfect example of how it should work. You have excess water. So for instance, when an inch of water is flowing over the dam, that equates to several hundred millions of gallons of water just going over the dam, not being used. So we're capturing that water during the excess periods. We treat it, put it into the ground for storage, and now we're in recovery mode. And we actually have two ASR wells in the city. One is downtown, and one is at the treatment plant. And the one at the treatment plant is the newer of the two, and it is in cycle testing with the state. So basically, it's not fully permitted yet, but it is, we're in the cycle testing mode. What we're doing is we put water in, store it for a while, recover it, make sure we're pulling the same water back out, and then we're able to use it beneficially by putting it into the distribution system. And all we're doing when we pull it back out of the ground is we chlorinate it and put it into the system.
And then we were one of the first in the state to do that, or?
We're one of the first in the state to be using a system. I don't want to bore everybody with the long-term story here, but basically, ASR was thought to be the savior of everything because, again, we have more than 50 inches of rain on a normal year, but it all falls at once. So being able to capture it. So our ASR well at the water plant, we have over 300 million gallons of water stored underground. To put that in perspective, the two large storage tanks at our hard-service pump station on First Street are each 2 million gallons each. So to equate to the amount of equal storage tanks, you'd have just a field of storage tanks to provide 300 million gallons of storage. But the city was the first to actually institute a program of treating the water before you put it into the ground to remove the oxygen from it so that it doesn't mobilize arsenic in the underground environment. Because what was happening was, in the midst of all of the ASR technology, the federal government dropped the water quality standard for arsenic from 50 parts per billion to 10 parts per billion. So all of a sudden, everybody with an ASR well, when they were in recovery, was pulling arsenic out of the ground. But if you remove the oxygen before you put it into the ground, the arsenic isn't mobilized out of the soil matrix, and when you recover the water, the arsenic is at background levels.
Okay.
Could you repeat that?
And you're going to contact Tropicana, right?
Yeah. And overall, we're somewhere between 5.5 to 6 million gallons a day of water usage in the city. So our ASR, between the two of them, has the ability to provide about a third of that volume if we were using both ASRs at the same time.
Well, it just shows, over the years, the city of Bradenton has done a great job with its water system.
We try.
Try. But again, there's times, but we have that capability in rougher times to manage it properly.
Yeah. The technology that was used with the first ASR downtown to remove the oxygen was a membrane process, and it's very expensive to maintain it. We got lots of funding. Multiple water management districts, the DEP, all provided funding for that project in order to prove that it works. We proved that it works, but we proved that it's very expensive to do it that way. With the water plant ASR, we modified, went from a treatment process that was a membrane process to a stripping tower. So instead of spending 40 cents per thousand gallons to deoxygenate it, we're now spending somewhere around 3 cents per thousand gallons to deoxygenate it.
In Jim's report, you see on a weekly basis, that's that blue?
Looks like, looks like an unpainted Tabasco bottle sitting out at the water treatment plant.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilman Roth. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to citizen comment. The first we have up is Thomas, and I believe it's Scaloda. Okay. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tom Scaloda, and I live at 7524 Third Avenue West in West Bradenton. I'm here to speak to you about the issue of horseback riding in Palm Springs Bay. I know your councils addressed this issue a number of times, dating back at least to 2011. I also know you spent considerable time and effort on it, and I can feel your frustration, so I'll only take up a few minutes. I'm not going to go into the reasons to ban the horses from the bay. I think you're well aware of them, but I want you to know that I addressed the county commission and distributed a comprehensive package of information describing the reasons to stop the riding in the bay. I paid special attention to the barriers to act in the past and included in the packet a proposed ordinance that the county can easily implement. I have copies of that packet here for you today. Due to the volume of the supporting material, a lot of that information is in the form of attachments, scientific articles. Each time the issue's been brought up, the stable owners, their families and employees make emotional appeals in favor of maintaining this activity. Nevertheless, you know the severe environmental damage, safety concerns, and even more serious public health concerns aren't going to go away. This issue will continue to come up until something's done. If Pinellas County and 25 other Florida jurisdictions understand the reasons why horses shouldn't be allowed in our waterways and have implemented bans, there's no reason Manatee County can't do the same. All it takes is the courage and desire of the commissioners to protect our citizens and environment. You can help by letting the county commissioners know that you support this ban. If you'll study the information I've provided, I think you'll agree with me. Any support from you as individuals or as a full council would have a significant impact. To make a bad and obvious pun, I've been told I'm beating a dead horse. I don't think this horse is dead, and I don't think it's going to die. As long as this activity continues to damage the environment and threaten public safety and health, it'll come up again and again. I served as a commissioner on Anna Maria over 20 years ago, so I know this isn't an easy job. And ironically, usually on Wednesday morning, I'm out on the island pitching horseshoes. So I thank you all, and don't hesitate to contact me for any questions or if you have any further information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Glenn Gibellina?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Will. Glenn Gibellina for the record, 711028 Street. Code enforcement, you bet, that is a tough job, but I think we need to give them more tools for them to be more effective. I've brought this up in the past. I'll bring it up again. I think we need to get a demolition fund going out of the city so code enforcement can be more effective. You know, we've got blight in the 5th District. We've, Ward, we've got, we've got blight all over. So as you talk about Mr. Copeland's agreement this afternoon, later on, I'll speak on that. But that could be a model. You can use that as a homeowner and say, "You know what? Let's get rid of this structure. We're going to put a lien on it, and we're going to get it, we're going to clean it up." When you have a clean lot, it's more attractive to smaller developers, and it enhances the neighborhood, and it makes it safer. The other thing I want to bring up is live streaming. So I know you livestream, but it takes about two weeks for this to get on YouTube, and I think that's a disservice to the citizens out there. I know the county does it in one day. So that's the other thing. The other thing, of course, is the Sadowski funds. Now, our elected officials do a great job, for the most part, but when they fleece the Sadowski funds for 2/3, we should get an explanation of how we're going to make up that money. It's a done deal. There's nothing we can do about it. I get that. But are there CARES money we can divert into the Sadowski funds? 2/3, you're going to have to make up forever. Not just one year, not the way they've been raiding it for the last 20. This is a permanent situation. I have emailed all our elected officials, and I've yet to hear a response. So we're just trying to figure out how the city, how the county, you know, they're $3.1 million short for the remainder of this fund. So if we can get some clarity, some answers, maybe we can divert some monies from other funds and pools. I don't know. I mean, this is a tough situation. You know, I'm all about affordable housing, and anytime, you know, you poke that pig, you're going to hear from me. I'm not happy about this. Unfortunately, it's a done deal, and we're just asking our elected officials to help the municipalities and the counties out of how we make up the difference. Because if we can't, then it's going to come out of general funds, and it's going to hurt the overall budget of the municipality and the county. You know, 3.5 million's tough to make up. Your amount is going to be equally tough based on the size. So thank you.
All right. Glenn, just, we're going to go right into consent, so you can go ahead and talk on that item also?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I apologize. Ms. Beauchamp, I'm finding our meetings are placed on YouTube a lot faster than two weeks. What is our average time?
Almost all the time, they're posted on Monday following the meeting. The reason for the Monday, the delay from the meeting time to Monday is because we have to send the entire meeting off to a company that closed captions it for us to make it ADA compliant. We do that on Wednesday after the meeting. By Monday, Tamra reviews it to make sure everything is correct, and then we post it on Monday. This last week, it took a couple days longer because they had some technical difficulties. The meeting was very long, and they had a problem uploading it. So I think it was maybe Wednesday when it got posted. It's never been two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
We had, we looked into live streaming, and there was a cost to that. Do you remember what it was?
Not off the top of my head, but it was significant.
It was more than the council wanted to approve at the time.
Yes. It requires a staff of people to do actual production. It's something that the county offers that we just don't.
Yeah. One thing I am, I think there's another way. And I spoke to Mr. Clappseto at ME-TV, and he thinks there's, he was supposed to get with you guys, and he thinks there's a faster way, because the county does it now. Maybe we don't want to follow the county, getting this out online almost immediately versus Monday, because it becomes old news if somebody's, you know, not able to attend. And I suggest that we look into that.
The audio is always available, and we do provide the audio to people when they want it right away, if they can't wait for the actual YouTube posting. And if they want it non-close caption, we can also put it on a thumb drive and get it to them right away as well. So we are responsive to people.
That's not friendly. You know, you have to request that individually, and people just aren't going to do that. You know, we're not posting that on our website. And why is it we can't entertain and let ME-TV help us get that out sooner, like suggested?
I'll check with Charles, too.
It wasn't suggested with me, but...
Yeah, I got with him, this is months ago, at a municipal government's meeting, and he says, "There's a way around this. Let me speak to Tamara or Sharon." And I don't, he didn't do it. So, you know, he's busy.
Well, if it's all right with the council, I'll talk with Charles, because I talk with him quite often about a lot of things. I can check with him and see what he thinks.
Right. And he says YouTube has a, we may not accept it, but it has the closed caption option on there, and I know we've talked about that, and you probably said, "I don't, I know we disagree to disagree," but you don't agree, you agree with him, yeah?
Our attorney has recommended we do not use YouTube closed captioning.
Attorney's not here today. Let's pass it.
Our ADA attorney...
No, no, that's not our attorney. That's a sit-in.
Our ADA attorney has recommended we do not use the YouTube closed captioning, as it does not meet court standards. It has not passed the standards in other communities, and so he has recommended we not, it has to meet a certain percentage of accuracy, and it does not. And we would have to make sure, if we went with the county, that there's meets that accuracy for our attorney to protect us.
And I know one of the things, too, that it comes on ME-TV pretty quick. I know within 12 hours, 24 hours, I've seen it. But I know a lot of people don't have that.
They don't have it, and it's not a scheduled, you know, you can't look it up in your TV guide and say, "I want to see it at this time." It's on a loop that, you know, is not the same every time. So I think in today's world, we need to do a better job if we can, because it's just, and I don't think that's...
Well, the option was to do the live streaming, which we had the quote, and I'm sorry, I don't have it with me today, but it was the equipment, it was the personnel involved in doing a live production. So...
So what I'll do is I'll check with Charles and bring it back, either if we have a workshop before or a next meeting. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to Mr. Gibellina before we go to the consent.
I had 21 seconds. I forgot to ask real quick, why are we still going to consider moving to CRE meeting? Because there's a 1:30 county meeting I've got to be to. We addressed that before, but to roll it in after this meeting. So are we talking, which item first?
You said the 5F demo?
Yes. Okay, so again, this goes back to Mr. Spencer Copeland. I was with Pastor Sykes yesterday. We did call up Mr. Copeland, had a very nice conversation with him. And I guess we're a little confused on the process. You know, back in December, I wrote a letter, and apparently there were things in the works at that time. Now, I think there is a lack of communication from the county, I mean, from the city, from code enforcement. I don't know, but Mr. Copeland yesterday, and he was on speakerphone with the pastor, is there's been no correspondence with him. And I did a records request on the contract, and it's been ready for months. So I don't know why, at least he wasn't emailed a copy of this contract for him to review. And then the process would be, does he sign it first, or do you fill in the blanks? You know, that hasn't not been, I can't get a definition out of that. So...
I can explain.
Okay, after my three minutes. I just think there could be a better way. And I think if we can get this one down path and get it more smoother, and approach the homeowner and say, "There are other options out there to get rid of the slum and blight." You know, a lot of these properties, like the Copelands, was inherited from his mother. They didn't want to do anything with it. They didn't have the funds to knock it down, and it's been sitting there for, you know, over 10 years that I know of. And that's a personal interest, because War Temple is my church, and that daycare is 50 feet from it. So I do have a personal interest in communicating with Pastor Sykes and Spencer. So I just think the process, if we're going to approach a homeowner and help them and help get rid of the blight, that there should be a process in writing. Okay, we're going to do evaluation, and then we've got a demo company, and then here's the lien process. You know, all those factors and gears and mechanics should be upfront to the property owner, so one, he knows what he's getting into. And two, code enforcement should also go in there and say, "Look, we're just doing our job. Don't kill the messenger, but you're going to rack up fines every day until you comply." And a lot of times, the compliance is a knockdown, and they don't have the funds for that. So all I'm saying is that we need to, we need to get, I say 65,000 for starters, that's 10 houses. There's 10 houses within a three-block area of War Temple that need to go. And I'm sure you've got a few in your district as well. So if we can make it streamline the process for the homeowner or the investment company that doesn't want to do it, and it's knocked down, it's too expensive to rehab, let's give them the tools to do it. You're going to have a lien on the property. And when an investor comes in, they're going to pay off that lien, and they're going to build there. So the process needs to be smoothed out. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
This was the first of the process, unfortunately for us. We went through the process of getting the, where we needed to make sure that we were not being held liable. That took quite a while getting through our two different agreements, our indemnity agreement. Then when we finally got all the documents finalized, as far as the mortgage and the note, then we did not have a, when we got the quotes from the demo people, we did not have it in a form that was acceptable to us as far as a contract, so that had to be reworked. All those things have now been done as background legwork, so now we are ready to move forward.
So and once approving that today, it'll, the next step, and timing-wise, do we have any?
And then the only thing that we want to do, that I recommend we do, because this is, this is the documents that we're going to require to make it happen. Then I want the Copelands to be able to sit down with our city attorney and make sure that they explain to them exactly what they're signing and why they're signing it, so there's no questions in the end as to what they're actually signing for.
But in the meantime, we didn't communicate with them while we were going through all this?
We hadn't gone through it because they were understanding that, you know, we'd gone back and forth as to who was going to handle the demo. And then once we said that we were having to prepare documentation, that would be acceptable. So that's all we were doing, was getting documentation. They did not appear to be in any hurry for us to go in and demo it. There's other people that may be in a big hurry. They were not particularly in a big hurry.
Either, but maybe they wanted a little, you know, call like, "We're still working on it."
Right, that could be.
And I did talk to Pastor Sykes yesterday, and he was understanding also at that point. Mr. Sanders?
Wasn't the holdup because of the demolition contractor? Was it communicating with you?
Well, part of it was that they kind of went dormant for a while, and then they submitted a contract that was not a contract that we could utilize. So we had to then go back and work through the attorneys to get that reworked in a form that we could accept as a contract for demo for the city, not for a private citizen, for a municipality.
So Glenn was telling me that contract was $5,000. Now, I noticed it's 6,500.
I think it's always been 6,500.
I'm sorry?
I think it's always been the same amount.
Always been 6,500?
Yes, it's always been the same amount.
He's shaking his head.
Well, Volker's shaking his head yes, so.
Okay.
And Volker's, Volker is the one that got...
Price goes up when you get attorneys involved, doesn't it?
Volker is the one that got the contract, so.
No, and I remember hearing 6,500 all along, so, but it's going to go through today. We'll keep the process going and make sure we... We'll keep the process going and make sure we stay on it.
So that process is, once approved today, they will, you'll sit down, so you'll sit down with the family and go through, make sure they understand what they're signing. It's a mortgage, right?
Right.
And then when the demo, when did they say the demo would start?
I don't know that exact date. We have to get that, we have to get them to agree to it before we can do the demo. They have to understand.
So we haven't signed a demo contract?
No, we're waiting for them to agree. There's no reason to do a demo contract if they won't agree to the mortgage and to the indemnity.
So that's the part that Ms. Coachman, I think, is why haven't we been communicating with them in that regard, because now I didn't know that.
Like I said, there has been no push from them to do this. There has been no, there has been no active push by them.
They wouldn't push because they thought it was happening and they just didn't get a phone call. The push was to begin with to do it and now they're sitting there just waiting on the city to make a decision.
I think one way to...
Mea culpa is fine. If we didn't communicate enough with them, that we'll accept the responsibility that we did not, but now we are moving forward with it to make sure it can happen.
So we're going forward, let's keep going forward on that and we will try to, as a city, do a better job and some things are, been talked about with all of our department heads and attorney to try to speed things up, so that is a process we're trying to work.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
In the future, maybe when we have these lengthy processes, even if the family doesn't seem to be in a hurry, maybe every two or three weeks, we'll just give a little courtesy call.
Oh, we can, we can do that. And I picture, this won't happen very often. This is, this is not a process that our, that most of our folks like to see happen this way. This is not going to be a, hopefully is not going to be a common occurrence, that we are out demoing properties in this manner, almost with the voluntary assistance of the property owner. Usually the process is it's forced because there's no other alternatives.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Roth.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, we had this similar situation with different circumstances back after the recession where we had a bunch of, yeah, where we had a bunch of, you know, limbo properties that were owned by the banks or the homeowners walked away from them and we did, we did have a period of time where we were doing demo and it was very, very tedious, very lengthy, because we needed to cover our tracks and make sure that we had all the legal rights to come in. We were, we were doing it on behalf of the neighborhoods who were asking that these homes be demoed. And, you know, we stopped doing that, it was a cleanup after the Great Recession. And the reason why we want to make sure that we do everything right and correct, because I know that before I was on council, there was a building torn down on Ninth that at some point in time, the T didn't get crossed and an I didn't get dotted and we wound up having to buy a piece of property that now had an inflated value of, you know, way beyond its real value and it was so, so unfortunately, if we're going to, if we're going to go down this road, we need to protect ourselves from paying, you know, an exorbitant amount of money for a piece of land.
Thank you.
That was pretty much my comment. I would be concerned about streamlining this too much for that very reason, just to make sure. Sometimes ownership of property can get very tangled and I am strong supporter of people having their rights to their property. And so I would never want to infringe upon that unless this, so I mean, I know it's painstaking, but I think the process will end up with a better quality that way.
Right, if you call, a lot of those properties that were on our targeted list, if you, if you remember down in Mr. Polk's office, there was always a map. A lot of those the CCRA acquired and that happens to be the surplus properties that the CCRA has. We acquired them and demoed them and that was a lot, a lot of those properties that were sitting out there and been utilized since were that.
And one of the things that obviously, if any of you know me up here, it's obviously, government sometimes does take longer than we want, but we are working through that through, through the mayor's office to try to do some of those things a little bit better and try to keep communication open, so points taken and we will, we will keep working that direction, so. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ghibellina. All right, and we've got the consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carriage unanimous. All right, moving on to our city attorney, number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you all may have received a, an email from Scott Rudacell. This item, we're seeking to be continued to a date uncertain because in noticing this for this meeting, staff determined that the city no longer has a need to maintain this board, which is charged with hearing the complaints related to the fair housing discrimination. And then, so we need to draft a new ordinance to come back to at some point to clean up the code, to make sure that we get this in the right posture in front of you. So we recommend, the motion today would be to continue this to a time yet to be advertised.
Attorney Robinson, should I read it into the record first or do we not need to do that since it'll be continued?
Sure.
I just want to make sure we...
No, I think we can read it in the record, yes.
Well, I'm not really looking forward to it, I just don't want to do anything that might come back to, you know, be a problem later. Today we had scheduled and advertised the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 3079, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida relating to the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, the GACRB, amending Chapter Two, Article Eight of the City of Bradenton Code of Ordinances to rename the GACRB as the Housing Committee, revising the requirements of the GACRB Housing Committee, including incorporating provisions from Chapter Two, Article Seven, related to the Community Relations Board, and provisions from Chapter Forty-Six, Article Three, related to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, revising provisions of Chapter Two, Article Seven, relating to the Community Relations Board, amending Chapter Forty-Six, Article One, to revise the definition of Community Relations Board, revising provisions of Chapter Forty-Six, Article Two, relating to the Community Relations Board, amending provisions of Chapter Forty-Six, Article Two, to change references from Community Relations Board to Housing Committee, revising provisions of Chapter Forty-Six, Article Three, to change references from Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, making related findings, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Thank you for humoring me.
And I'd also like to thank Vicki for doing all the research on the fair housing requirements for fair housing. She did a lot of legwork, realizing that was no longer necessary for us to have that, so in the end, we'll go back to where we really want it to be, which is with an Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, I have a question.
Hold on one second, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Roth, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so I'm just, so I'm a little concerned here, not overly concerned, that we've got to a second reading of an ordinance and then at the last minute, we found out we have no need to maintain the board, but we were about, we would have had a public hearing and passed an ordinance had we not found this out at the last minute. I'm just curious how we got this far down the road. I'm glad we caught it.
Well, we currently have the board anyway that does that. What we found out is that we can eliminate the board. So passing this wouldn't have harmed anything. We already have that fair labor, that fair housing already in existence, so it wouldn't have hurt anything. But with Vicki's research, we found that Tim had approached this years ago in looking at whether it was necessary and was going to bring it to council and then it appeared to just die.
Mm-hmm.
And didn't happen, because we didn't think, and therefore it sat dormant for a lot of years, because we were not in a position to do that. But he had never followed through with the, with the getting rid of the fair housing portion of the board, so we're now there. When Vicki started looking through it in detail, she did the legwork and found out that, no, as an entitlement city and what, we don't need this and we can't even act on it, so there's no need to have that, the fair housing portion of this Community Relations Board in. So we're going to, we're going to hold this in abeyance if for some reason that should change and we actually really need this ordinance for some reason. But our path is to now just come back with the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, so, and my point being then, I thank staff for finding this, that's great. We got almost to an ordinance and, you know, we find out that, and I'm all for, you know, if we, if we have a board that is not functioning or we don't need or anything like that, I'm all for eliminating such boards, but, you know, it's just, this was a, this was a near miss, is all I'm pointing out.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes, if you remembered, the last meeting, I questioned this pretty heavily and I was assured that there was no hiccups here, that we wasn't changing some authority in the past. Again, luckily Vicki researched and found out that there is, so that's fine, we found it. Good, good, good job, Vicki. But since this has been advertised as a second reading and nobody knows that, is there, shouldn't we ask Mr. Robinson if there's somebody in the audience that would like an explanation of what we're doing here?
Well, I think they've heard the explanation, but certainly...
Oh, yeah, but I mean, they may have a comment.
Sure.
And we've advertised it as a second reading, so if they came here, if there's nobody here, that's fine.
Sure, sure.
But if they came here, they might have something, something else to say.
We would need to open up...
We would get to, that's part of it, there's a comment on it, so.
All right, exactly. Exactly.
That's part of still going on. Okay, Mrs.?
No, I didn't know if we were ready for a motion, but if it's a public hearing, do you have to?
Well, I...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't think it's a public hearing. I think the mayor can ask if there's anyone in attendance that came to speak to this that would like the opportunity.
Yeah, but I do have a card, so. But hearing what you've heard, it may change the conversation. Excuse me, still to get to the, and again, my question would be, how quick do we bring this back at our next meeting?
We're hoping to be able to. It's still, the still half of the ordinance is still there. It's the, we've already done the hard work, which was determining the numbers of people, the positions that would be on the affordable housing per the city ordinance, those that are easiest to be able to fill. We did all that legwork in preparing this, so that was not wasted. So we'll just be bringing back the Affordable Housing Committee in the form that, that works for the City of Bradenton in compliance with state statute.
And obviously, we're working through getting the right person in the seat that meets the requirement and that was the main goal to start, so they could have meetings with quorums. And that's again, some of it might have got going and then we found out, so we're correcting it in the right way now. So, all right, so I'm going to go ahead and open up, obviously I have one card to talk on this, Mr. Ghibellina.
Thank you, and I just want to address, once you get a template for the demolition, it's set, lake up water, they do a great job. Good to see you at the Jim Jordan Luncheon Monday, it's a knockout. So let me tell you what I have, what I have found here. So we have...
There's the ordinance.
And it's still muddied in mind, in mind, because you still have us...
As the Housing Committee serves at the Community Relations Board.
You still are. That's gone?
Oh, you still are. That is what the future ordinance will pull apart. When we go forward with the next ordinance, it will be, it will be a, it will be a very formal presentation that has to eliminate the fair housing portion of this, change the ordinance that current, not even this one that's in existence, the prior ordinance that was in existence that had the fair housing portion and the Community Relations Board. What it will have to do is do away with the Community Relations Board and form the new board, which will be the housing, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, will be the fallout from that. But the next legislation has to do away with those two in its current form and bring back the one that should exist. So yes, you are currently existing as the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board and you will exist until such time as that ordinance is undone, meaning you can operate legally, you can do everything you need to do as that board, we will not be addressing any fair housing issues. We have never addressed any fair housing issues with that, but we won't be. And then you will be, then we will be street legal with the, with the...
Don't print any business cards until we get this resolved.
Well, again, my issue is, is the definition of Community Relations Board. It's still in the reading today, it's in the reading today and as Mr. Roth pointed out, it's incorrect, so...
Excuse me, it is not incorrect. It is correct and that is how we function right now. That is the requirement to function that way right now. We will be correcting that. It is not incorrect. We are perfectly legal doing what we're doing. Any references we have to Community Relations Board will be done away with, but that is, it is perfectly fine to function that way now, because that is the way we have to function, because that is what our ordinance says.
Right, and that's why we're, we're going to ask for a continuance, so we get it when it's set up correctly, when it's set up, it'll be correct and it'll be the Affordable Housing Advisory Board.
As long as, as long as it's just that and not the Community Relations Board, as it's stated.
But that's why this is not, we're going to ask for continuance.
We will be doing away with the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board.
Why? Why are we going from a board to a committee? What's the difference?
Um...
Is there authority, authority difference?
No. Because it says, because it says how you have to get members. Generally, a mayor would appoint committee members, but in this instance, it says they have to be appointed in this level and the council approves them, so.
So we were originally the Affordable Housing Board.
Um, I don't know how long ago. We've always, we have been since 2002, the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board.
We weren't referred to it as that?
No. Unfortunately, we were referring to it wrongly, because it should have always been referred to as the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board. It got referred to as the Affordable Housing Committee, because that's what the statute says.
What's the purpose of the board?
The purpose of that board was twofold. The purpose of the board was to serve as the Affordable Housing Committee and to serve as the Community Relations Board, which was to hear fair housing complaints.
And we've not done that because others are doing that?
Yes, that is the case.
Who is doing that?
That would be, I think, at a county or a state level.
Gulf Coast Legal.
Okay. Gulf Coast Legal or other folks are currently doing that. We are not authorized to do that at this point in time.
So they don't have a government entity? Gulf Coast Legal is legal services, free legal services for people, but that's not a government, we don't have a government, any entity that's protecting the people.
Vicki went through this and Vicki, can you come forward?
Fair housing is, that's what that is.
There are other places to take the fair housing.
Well, I'm saying if I'm, I'm a customer, which is a citizen, you know, I don't even know about Gulf Coast, who do I call to help me?
Okay, Gulf Coast Legal, they do fair housing complaints. Bay Area Legal Services probably does too. There is also the State Office or the State Committee on Human Relations and then there's also HUD at the federal level. Manatee County does not handle fair housing complaints at the county level.
So wasn't the intent to have a local jurisdiction over this with the city at some point? Are we, are we not, are we trying to change that?
What it was, was originally the city had applied for a HUD grant to become a fair housing assistance program.
Okay.
And that started around 2004. They really never got off the ground. What we did, the city did do was they enacted this ordinance to make themselves a substantially equivalent agency. Once they did that, then HUD could refer any fair housing complaints they received back to the city for investigation.
Wouldn't we still want to do that?
Well, if you want to do that, then you need to set up a Community Relations Department, appoint a Community Relations Director, that would be paid for out of the city budget and then you've got to get these people trained in order to handle these complaints. I mean, because this is serious business. This isn't just like fluffing around playing at it. It is serious business, because you could end up abrogating somebody's rights.
Right.
But they do have a capability, if something comes up, to go to Gulf Coast Legal or the others you mentioned.
Yes.
So if somebody called you with a complaint, you would forward them on to Gulf Coast Legal?
Which is what I have been doing. I refer them to them, the state or HUD.
And have we ever processed one of those since 2004?
No.
Because we've forwarded them on if they ask?
Yes.
So the process is there without setting up another city department and we haven't had anybody complaining that it's the process doesn't help them if they need it?
No.
Okay.
So, a question, should that complaint go through the Affordable Housing and then refer them on to Gulf Coast Legal?[1775.26] Now, we fund Gulf Coast Legal...
No, because now you're in, you're inserting a middleman.
I, I know, but, but, we are the government that protects the citizens.
Yes, so they call, they call me...
And so, they just call you and, and you refer, okay. That, it seems like that wasn't the original intent.
No, the original intent was, the way that it was supposed to work was the city was supposed to set up their Community Relations Department, appoint a director to that department. That director would interact with the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board with investigating any fair housing complaints that were handed to them by HUD.
Okay, so I think if we're taking that out of our responsibilities, that the City Council needs to vote on that, because that's a pretty major issue that we're...
I think you would be, that is the purpose.
That's the purpose of the ordinance?
The next ordinance would eliminate that committee.
Yep.
That board, would eliminate that board, saying it no longer exists.
That's hard, that's hard to determine by reading that, reading that ordinance.
Well, that's not what this ordinance is.
That's not this ordinance.
I know.
That next ordinance would be very clear, saying it is eliminating that board.
Okay, if that's acceptable, it just, yeah.
Alright, so we'll bring it up, we'll have a first reading, and we'll have time to discuss it and go forward, and then, you know, there'll be opportunity for more public comment at the time, when it comes up with the correct way.
So, we're gonna have a first reading, and then we can discuss that if we truly do need to have this, or if we're eliminating something that we, we should not, after the first reading?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that is correct, that is correct.
So, I think that, that's important, if anybody has opinion on that, that we should not eliminate that fair housing.
I'm, I'm gonna be like Scott Hopes then, I would recommend, and it's not saying, because it's very detailed, if you haven't, please read all the things that you're asking a citizen board to do, and all the powers you're giving them. It is very serious stuff, as to whether you think that's the appropriate board or committee to be doing those things. It's not just take it in and say, oh, great, they have subpoena powers, they have a ton of things to make sure that that's what you're asking a board to do. And it means you would be hiring, like you said, a, a whole staff to be able to follow that, because it's, it gets very involved.
Yes.
And very legal heavy.
And that staff would have to be trained. So, there's the additional expense of training them.
I have a question for our planning director. Robin, is, how's other cities do this?
Well, in my experience, past experience, the housing was actually administered by, at the county level, so we didn't do it at a city level. So, I didn't have a lot of experience with that particular issue, so...
So, and it doesn't seem like, you know, I mean, again, we want to protect everyone if there, an issue comes up, but we have opportunity to be able to protect them and give them rights, and there doesn't seem to be a swell of issues that we don't need to create a department for issues that aren't coming up. So, if we, if it does come up, then we can always adjust it in the future, but right now, we have a capability of protecting the citizens through other means that you help with.
Exactly. And not only that, they receive funding from us, or they will receive funding from us this year.
The one thing we may want to do, it would be pretty easy, if, we could note somewhere on the website that if you have this complaint, who to contact, so that they make sure there's somebody here who can lead them in the right direction, if nothing else, because it, it may not get to Vicky right away. It used to be the point of contact was at the mayor's office, I think. Originally, it was set up, there was a single point of contact, or even Susie, there was a single point of contact to make sure everybody knows who that is. In this instance, even if it's a referral point of contact, it would be good that we would have somebody saying, please contact this, and they can put you to the right direction.
I think that's good to have it on the website, and then to have somebody specifically assigned at Gulf Coast that can take those, take that call, and we refer them on, so there's no gap between the public and, and getting the service they need.
Okay, if it's not on there, we'll make sure that it's on.
Yeah, it should be on there, and who is the point contact at Gulf Coast Services? Because there has been some issues over there in getting service in the past, right?
Well, they were, they were being served, it was just the documentation.
Well...
People were, people were...
We just got through hearing that documentation is important on this, so...
Yes.
We, we need to have, to make sure that that's being done.
Yes. Okay. Will be, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Ghibellino, you have anything to finish? You have 22 seconds.
I got a minute fifty-nine.
I'm kidding.
So... You sit down out there, then you go out all day.
You know, these are really muddied waters, because you're taking an old, old ordinance and slicing and dicing and trying to shove 10 pounds of crap in a five-pound bag, it doesn't work. We had the chair resign at the last meeting. She's frustrated, I'm frustrated. Let's just go back to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, like the other 67 counties in the state. Why do you have to do all this umbrella stuff? Oh, we're gonna be on this council, and you're gonna, that's not our job. Our job is to bring you the best policy possible in affordable housing. That's all our board wants to do. They wanted to take three months off. I said, what? I said, you don't think there's an affordable housing crisis all year round? And then, they'd only want to work one hour a month, 12 hours a year is what they want to give us, and then they want to take three months off. So, I'm frustrated with the board. You know, at the county, we do things a little different, I hope we adapt some of those policies, but let's just unmuddy the waters, make it the ad hoc committee, and be done with it, per Florida statutes. We know, our board knows what that committee does, and when you start muddying in with other umbrellas of, of, of Community Relations and all, we didn't sign up for that. We signed up to give you the best policies possible, and to, for you hopefully to adopt those policies that our board goes over. Just let us do our job, and quit frustrating us in the lousy hour we have to talk about these things. It's just, I, I just think you're overcomplicating it. I'm a kiss guy and a guy, keep it simple. I think we need to go back with the templates that the rest of the state has adopted, and has worked for those, and just keep it simple, please. That's all we want to do, is bring you good policy.
Thank you. Alright, so the chair will entertain a motion?
I would like to move to table this to an undetermined as yet date for further revision.
Continuance, continue.
Continue it, okay, sorry. Move to continue this to an undetermined as yet date for further revision.
Second.
Second, alright. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll start, start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Mrs. Bochamp?
Next, we have the first reading of Ordinance 3080. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 50, Article 2, Division 3, to amend requirements regarding placement of the special parking permit, to add a new section prohibiting parking in certain parking spaces and parking lots within the city without a special parking permit, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Again, this is a first reading, so no action is required at this time. We will set the second reading and public hearing for June 9th.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
What, what is it we're trying to attempt to do here?
The city issues special parking permits for certain things. We did not have that specified in the code to the point where parking enforcement felt comfortable enforcing that, so we are clarifying some language for enforcement purposes. It's not really changing, I don't believe, anything that we're doing now, we're just clarifying the language to give them specific...
It's where we designate parking by permit, where if you have to have a, you have a permit, whether it's in the garage, whether it's in the Wilcox lot, whether it's out on Bacarada, where we're allowing it by permit, our code does not specifically reflect how we address if there has been a permit issued for that. This would allow us to enforcement where those permits are issued for particular lots versus just time, two-hour limits, metered limits, those kind of things, which are addressed.
So, question, if we're, are we gonna be issuing more permits to people to take these parking spaces?
No.
So, we're not, this is not, this doesn't avoid me getting a parking pass to just park in the garage free, because it's, you can't enforce it, because I got a sticker now?
We're not trying to do anything like that, we're, it is just saying, where we do issue permits, code, the parking enforcement will be able to issue tickets. If you're parking over in the Wilcox lot without a permit, you could be issued a ticket, because it's by permit only. If you're parking on Bacarada without the specialized sticker, you could be issued a ticket for that.
Chief, do you have a problem with that?
It's, it's being directed by them.
It's being directed by, so that, this is your, 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 your deal?
We took a closer look at it based on some reworking of the, the permit process and realized that we didn't really have a specific legal authority listed in there, and so, this makes it much more clear.
I can tear up all my old tickets.
No.
I'll let you take care of them for me anyway.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, just clarification, so, two questions. Is this mostly, because I, when you see special parking, most people think handicap, so that's not, that's not what we're talking about?
No.
So, I'm assuming we're talking about like business owners or, or workers, and also, do that, is, do we not have the ability to issue tickets right now, so this is gonna be a ticketing, a new thing, where...
We have been issuing tickets in the past, I think it has come up as to whether we were comfortable issuing them in the past, so what we are now doing is saying, we will be very comfortable if this, if this is in place.
But specifically, will it, they will be able to specifically address a certain part of the code on the ticket, where it is, it was intended, but it was not specifically written?
So, we're not, this is not an attempt to go out and, and issue more tickets?
No.
This is basically to make the ones that we have more in compliance?
Right.
And, and, and they are like business owners, is that who's getting the special permits? Or businessmen, or women, or women?
Generally, you can buy the permits, or it's designated, like when we officially designated out in front on Bacarada, that, that to be where it was.
Okay.
That was allowing, that, you know, they all have the, the stickers in the back windows, and if you don't, you're supposed to be able to get a ticket. We were having reluctance doing that, so it's just making sure that we can enforce those areas where we are making something other than two-hour parking, or there's meters out there.
The signage refers to a permit required.
Okay.
So, if you're parked there and you don't have the permit, they now will have the ability to write a ticket.
Like we have a...
Clearly, we always had the ability, this, this gives them a specific reference point.
Right.
And, and so, and the main part, my point is, this isn't something, like with Sarasota, we're not, we're not trying to create a parking ticketing issue series here. We're just clearing up something we're already doing.
This is clarifying for the ticket, yes.
That's fine.
If it goes to a judge...
When we have an issue, we can enforce it legally, and we say, right now, you know, for a year plus, we haven't had any issues, because there's been no people downtown. Now, our popularity is coming back, and we're having some people want to do it right. So, alright, so we have an ordinance 3080, setting the effective date of public hearing for June 9th, do I hear a motion?
No, no motion.
No motion necessary.
No motion, just move it forward, alright, thank you. Alright, new business?
We have no new business this morning.
City attorney?
No new business.
Okay. Alright, we have unfinished business, this was brought up by Councilwoman Coker?
Yeah.
For the Public Art Committee discussion?
Yeah. Well, we had a great discussion about public art, and I, I feel the sense of wanting to move forward with some kind of a process, so that we can select the art that, for the extension on the Riverwalk. And I know there was a lot of discussion as to whether or not this was CRA responsibility or, or for this board's responsibility, and if, if we need to, I think it'd be great to go ahead and establish a committee that's under our responsibility to get this moving forward, because it's a big process. I was able, and I have, I have for everybody, these are the policies and procedures that we developed on the Public Art Board when, when I was on it on the CRA. It was a six-months process to come up with this policy, there's some great information in here, it was done with, in conjunction and at the direction of a public art conservator, so it really looked into a lot of the details and anticipated a lot of the details, so I don't know if we want to establish our own board here, or what, but I want to keep pushing, I want to keep pushing this forward, so we can get the process in hand, because I think if we want a quality piece of art, we need to have a quality process, whatever that may be, and I'm happy to pass these down. Oh, I guess I need to keep on sharing broadly.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, um... So, so if any of you haven't seen the CRA agenda, which is gonna be at 1:15 today, we moved the Public Art Advisory Board discussions to the top of the agenda. This is something that, ever since we hired our new director, I've been talking to her about this process in detail, looking at other cities. I'll be bringing up, I have, we're gonna have a detailed discussion at 1:15 about this, with, and to be quite honest, this here will be reconsidered, exactly what you're talking about, you know, Anne Wyckel.
Yes.
So, so, we're, we're on it, we're just a little early.
Well, just to further that, I mean, the discussion the last time was that this was going to be paid for from general funds and not from CRA funds, and so, we could use CRAs. I just am following what that discussion was, so do we need to have our own committee, since this is gonna be the city's project and not the CRA's project? I just want to get that clarified, because that seemed like a big bump in the road the last time.
Public art has been, as you just pointed out, right here, run through the CRAs. So, so here we are now, now we have a budget, there's not a public art budget, there is, the CRAs have the ability, under their guidelines, to do, you know, public art, for the better ment.
I believe it's in the budget for the construction, though, for the public art project.
The construction project, I've talked to Mr. Callahan, there's commingled monies in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's, and if there's gonna be, I know at one point, there was a request for there to be an increase from the CRAs. So, it's, the process has been, this is a Bradenton Downtown Development Authority, Public Art Advisory Board, we're continuing on with that, with that agenda, so... Well, I mean, I, I, I'm not, the, in the CRA, in the CRA board, the discussion that I've been having since the beginning of the year on this, on this, has been to move towards that. So, so this is coming up now, we had a discussion at the workshop on May 5th that said that this was a CRA, and the consensus was this was a CRA, we're going forward, so I...
I didn't pick that up from that discussion.
I did not have a consensus, I got that everybody was confused.
Well, this is, this is a problem with workshops, I have a serious problem with workshops. I, I believe we should just have special council meetings, because this is not the first time that this has come up, where we, we have a consensus, we don't have a consensus, we agree. I, I find workshops to be very, very confusing, and I don't want to deal with that right now, but this is something where I thought that that was what was said, but what do I know? I, I can tell you that this was moved up to the top of, and, and we have done research on this, with what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
I have a, a whole box of, of material that I just have been going through, from when Anne Wyckel was doing this, and I have some issues with where we are now, and that will be coming up at the meeting.
See, I, I think the difficulty is the, the separation, and that's what I was trying to overcome, because that's when I brought up, and I did, I wanted to make sure I was right, that's why I pulled up the old policy, is that this, the intent of this board was to serve not just the DDA or CRA, it was to serve private, the private companies that were, if they wanted to get, if they wanted to have a quality process in selecting public art, they would use the Public Art Board. And, and I think by extension, I would think that the city board would as well, but then, you know, the discussion at that workshop was that we couldn't even be talking about it, because it was a CRA thing. That's why I wanted to bring it up and say, if we need our own committee, then let's get it going, because time is, time is of the essence on this. Because it's a process.
One thing that, right, one thing that I just want to bring up, from the standpoint of, I don't have a desire to just be creating another committee, to have two different public art committees, so, you know, basically, you're the same council as you are the CRA board, so is there a way to have one board that can serve both without any controversy? And again, the council would ultimately pick the board, so that's no issue, if, if there's names that come up, you pick the board, you do it, they can do, serve both purposes, when there's that need, to look like we're seamlessly moving through the city. So, I don't know that, you know, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs when you say, well, we're the CRA board or the city council, because you are the same people, so, Mr. Roth?
I actually have a question.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
Well, I mean, when you look at where the public art is, it's all, it's all in the CRA, it's all been purchased through the CRA, that this is, this is just where, where we are right now. Moving forward in the best, in the best possible manner, I, like I said, I have, there's information that's gonna be coming forward in the next meeting, that this is something that's been worked on. been worked on. This isn't the first time it's being discussed. So I personally believe we should just, I mean, you're, you're bringing, you're bringing, your, your example that you're bringing to us is from when you were on the DDA and CRA, about all the work that was done and all the public art is there. And it's just a continuation of that, so.
I'm bringing forward the process.
Okay.
That's what the purpose was.
Mr. Sanders?
Because it needs to start.
Yeah, I have some comments. All of our public art is in our CRA. We don't have any pub.
Not necessarily in the future though, it is currently, but that doesn't mean.
Well, all of our pub, that was my statement. That's not true?
It wasn't all paid for by CRA though. I don't believe.
What was not paid for?
The private public art.
Which was what?
You have the various statues that are done, you have the.
By Form Based Code?
The art associated with.
Form Based Code?
Grand Palms?
Form Based, well, that's CRA.
My only comment was, it is now. It doesn't have to be only in the CRA where public art will be coming forward. We may have a project that is outside the CRAs and they want to do public art.
So you have another board you're wanting to, to set up with more money than just exact, so that we're throwing more money at another board? We already got a board, or we already got a CRA process. Why are you doing, and?
No, it's not a question.
Wait a minute, we're talking over each other. I thought I had the floor.
But you're talking over Mr. Callahan.
Well, no, I had the floor.
Right, but you're asking a question, let the, let the people answer.
I had the floor, I wasn't finished. That's how the rules are.
So, Mr. Sanders?
Here we go.
I'm controlling the meeting and if you have a problem, you can just.
I do have a problem with you interrupting me before I'm done.
I'm not interrupting you, I'm answering a question and you seem to always bring it up to that level. You asked Mr. Callahan a question, you didn't let him finish.
He interrupted me.
No, he, you asked him, he started answering your question.
No, he interrupted me.
You answered, so we're going to move on, finish what you want.
Can I finish? Do I have a say here in this board?
I just said finish and I said Ms. Coachman has a question after you.
All right, so, so that we've got that.
It's your question.
So this, so, I'm on a question with Ms. Copeland if she was.
Ms. Copeland?
No, Coker, I mean. Okay, so we didn't want to have a committee for a regatta that I proposed that other, every other city or county or whatever has always done, that the public, to protect the public and keep the public involved versus a promoter coming in. But now we want to have a second art board that's not funded, that we'd have to fund. And, and you're bringing it up in a project that's in my ward and I should have at least a little bit more say. And we're out advertising that to news media and I don't, and I'm not in the loop. So yeah, I have a lot of issues with that. If, if we're going to keep our thumb on boards or not, Jane says we don't, we, we, we can't get involved in everything, we can't get, we can't have a regatta board, but we can have an arts board? I don't see any difference. Now, I'd like for her to address that. I, I just said that, just to repeat, you, you walked out, last, last week or two weeks ago, last week or two weeks ago, you said, we don't need a regatta board, we don't need to have our hands in that, we, we can't keep our thumb on every, every board. But now you're recommending another board that's not funded. I don't understand the difference.
I'm actually not. We have a very good public art board or a process. I don't know if any of those members are still on, I don't know the thing. I am just try, I am just trying to establish where we are. I am responding to what I got back from y'all that we couldn't even discuss it here. This, we have, all, my point here, we have a project that is well underway, that has a substantial budget and as I understand, and from y'all's discussion, it wasn't CRA funds, we need a process to select that public art. It takes a while to do it. We want a good process so we have a good product. That's all I'm talking about. We do not need to be deciding on public art from the dios. I mean, that, there's a lot that goes into it, you know, selecting artists, talking about, I mean, that's why I brought this up because there was a lot of thought that went into the procedures. And even with the public art board, you're not the person that sel, that, that goes out, meets with the artists and sees all their, their requests, I mean, that you ask for a request for proposals, they bring them back, they come and do a presentation, then you have this committee and you have the stakeholders, you have people that live in that, that area, you have the businesses in that area, people that have knowledge of art and things like that. They bring it back with a recommendation and then that's when you get your say.
Can I finish?
But, okay.
I, I don't disagree with you, but we have that process, we've had that process in place through the CRA and all these public arts, excuse me, all these public arts are, have been funded through the CRA except for the private ones. And I've asked Robin, what's our, what's our policy on Form Based Code to have private art? And then I see a lot of it's fenced in that the public can't get to. Is there, have you had the time to research that, please?
Yes, the, it, it just has to be visible from a public right of way. It can be behind a fence as long as it's visible from a public right of way and the Riverwalk would be considered a public right of way.
So I can, I can build a, a building and require it under Form Based Code to have public art, but then I can put a fence around it, makes it harder to see? That's, that's okay?
Yeah, as long as it's, it's, it is visible and viewable from the public right of way that you can.
It seems like it's more protected art, you know, and I think we need to maybe address that because we have a couple, seriously, we have, and I've had complaints that you've got a nice piece of art there that we mandate through Form Based Code, but you put a fence around it. You're like, is it for that purpose of that entity or is it for the public? It's not, I don't think it can be viewed as public art when we do that, but that's a whole nother issue. We have a process in place with CRA. If the council wants to have another public art board, again, I think that we're creating another bar, a board with, that's not funded and that you're going to be asking for that.
I'm not in favor of, of it either.
You're not favoring another art board? Okay, well, fine, then I don't know why we brought it up.
Well, and, and one of the things is, I haven't heard anything about saying that it's creating a second board, it's trying to figure out how to have one board to serve two purposes.
Well, you can't do that.
Mr. Sanders, please, I'm talking, Mr. Robinson and then Mrs. Coachman.
I'll defer to Mrs. Coachman.
I'm understanding that you're not talking about making a second board, but you presented something, a process that you said is decent, it works. And it's from a CRA. I have concerns about art or, or the, the interest in placing some new art around the city would include the CCRA because when I look at the maps, you can specifically see that it's Fourteenth Street CRA or Bradenton CRA that has a lot of the public art, which, great, but I would rather see the Public Art Advisory Board remain under CRA so that we could make sure that all the areas of the city are being represented with art as opposed to it staying the way it is. So if this is a great process, then we can use it in the CRA.
Mr. Robinson had a comment first, if that's.
No, no, no. So I, I believe I was the chair of the DDA when we created the Public Art Committee and it was a process that worked very well and I do remember the proclination of these, of these goals. And as Mr. Sanders correctly said, and I think Mr. Callahan correctly said, that's currently how we're doing it because that's really the only areas have, I think, in the, in the DDA has been where the public art has been located. But if in the future, this council wants to have public art or a process for public art outside of those DDA boundaries like in the CCRA or in most of your Ward One, we, we need to figure out a way to make sure that can work because you just can't have it within the, in the, in the, in the CRA structure. It has to, it has to be opened up. I don't know if we need a separate board, we can figure that out, but if that's the, if that's the intent of the council, we can figure out how to get you there. And I think the reason why you couldn't really discuss it, Ms. Coker, was because you were in a CRA meeting at the time. So this is actually the appropriate time to be talking about it because you all are the, the policymakers for the council. And if it's, if it's, if, if it's the goal of the, of the council to have more of a global look at this throughout the city as opposed to the DDA, then we, we can figure that out. But certainly we need direction from you all on, on that policy decision.
Mrs. Barnaby is up, but she deferred to Mr. Callahan.
I'd just like to remind people that there are some big undeveloped areas that this could pertain to that are not in the CRA, most particularly the sand pile right across the street. That is not in the CRA, just as a reminder. The Riverwalk is, but the remainder of the undeveloped property over there is not in the CRA. It's very close to right here. So there are some areas where this could come up very easily in, in the, in the near future.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, again, I remember being part of getting the Public Art Advisory Board set up. I was an ex officio member of the then DDA group because I wasn't on the, I wasn't an ex officio member of the DDA, but I was asked to sit in on the meetings of putting the advisory board together and their first probably two or three years of meeting. What I, sitting here listening to this, the, the questions seem to be, if you have an advisory board, and I remember when it was set up, it was set up with the understanding that while the funding for public art was in the DDA budget, because at that time, there was not an appetite on the city council to put funding for public art in the general fund of the city budget, the Public Art Advisory Board, the process and the standards under which they, they would select art would be applied to the entire city. So I guess I just have a question as to why the Public Art Advisory Board, it can serve the, the CRA, the Fourteenth Street CRA and the Central CRA, but it can also serve the whole city? And one other thing, where funding was going into the DDA and the Fourteenth Street CRA, it had to do with projects of a certain magnitude that triggered the threshold to provide funding for public art. It appears to me we have seen a shift in our community and we see where people want to have public art throughout the community. And perhaps it's incumbent upon this council to make that policy decision and to provide funds in this next budget as seed money to begin to put public art throughout the community, not just in CRA areas. I also know that Art Center Manatee has plans to do an expansion, I mean, they're working, they have a capital campaign going to be able to build an entire new building. And part of the grounds of that building includes a sculpture garden. So there is going to be public art in other areas outside of CRAs and this board needs to have a way that public art has received sanction from the community that it meets our standards of what we want to see as opposed to just anything being put up. So we've got to work through this.
Mr. Sanders would be next and then Ms. Coker, then Mr. Roth and then Mrs. Coachman.
So you're asking for one board or two boards, Ms. Barnaby?
As I understood it in the past, there was one board and the standards under which the board operated were applied to the entire city with a project if it came for, not just a project in the.
But, okay, no, wait a minute.
Oh, Ann County?
Okay.
That was the intent. Because that's what it says here, it says in your goals.
Okay, hold on a second.
So I see it as one board. I don't see separate boards.
She's finishing her question for me.
So legally, you can ask our counselor, we cannot fund things that are outside our CRA. So you can't have one board that does that?
The CRA can't, but the city can and the, and a private entity can.
But then, since you're asking this board that's set up by the CRA, right? Is that correct? The board is set up by the CRA?
It was set up by two of the CRAs, only two.
Okay, that, true, but still it's by the CRA, right? So you're asking them now to grab funding to go out to other parts of the city and I think that's a legal issue. I don't know if we can co-mingle money like that.
We're not asking to spend any money. We're just asking to use the personnel, I mean, to.
So we're, we're asking for them to, we're, we're going to ask the city council for additional funding?
No.
Well, where are we going to get the money?
For what?
For the, for the art in the other districts outside the CRA.
From the person who's got the project that's asking you to help them do the process.
They're going to fund it?
Yes.
Who's that, who's that?
Okay, uh.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Whoever the, whoever is seeking.
Hold on one second, hold on one second, please. So are you finished or?
No, I, I don't know where the funding is coming from. You're talking about a private person?
Yes.
Have we had any private individuals step forward and, and give us money for public art?
No, but what, one thing that, Mr. Sanders, I think it's not trying to create a controversy with this board over that board or this, it's trying to have one committee that's staying consistent with the art direction that this city wants to go. The Art Center, which isn't in any CRAs, it's on the sand pile, that is going to come. They may say, hey, can we get some of your board's ideas so we stay consistent? We may have a private business that wants to build something that it's a, a form of art that might not meet what this city wants, but we wanted to have that opportunity. Then if the city council decided to say not co-mingle funds, and this is where the, our council can say, it would be to have an opportunity to make it look seamless in the city that we have one committee that can serve two opportunities. If nothing ever comes up, they never meet. If something comes up, there's an opportunity to meet. So that's what I'm hearing. Mrs. Coker, I think, is the driver of this, right?
This kind of was driven out of when we were doing Form Based Code and we were putting a requirement on to private development to put public art up. The hope was that it be quality. And so we were offering our services to help them through that process, not, it's, it's a, it's a big process. We've had individuals, individual businesses that have done a mosaic on the side of their building and it fell off. Well, if, you know, maybe if we had like a professional, you know, these people, I mean, are going to guide them to help them to get a better product. That's the whole purpose of it.
One question in that, don't they also, if they do public art, they get some sort of benefit from the city? So that would be, they would pay for the public art, but they would get a, not a monetary benefit, but it's a, some sort of.
Credits.
Story heights and different things. So then they would come and say, hey, public art board, what would you suggest to meet the needs of the city or the qualities of the city? So we're not asking, and I don't think, what I'm hearing is that we're asking for, to create a second board, to take anything away from the CRA, not to, there's no backwards, backroom deals here. It's just to create a board that can serve two entities and if the entity, second entity, which would be the city decides to put some money into it to, to sweeten the pot, that could be done later. And I don't, Mr. Robinson, I heard something about, question, we would be co-mingling. I don't see any co-mingling if it's done correctly.
No, no, correct. You obviously can't be using CRA money to fund outside of CRA public art in this case.
But what I've heard also was this would help then set up the DDA, set up the CRA, set up the CCRA and set up the city. Now they might, you know, so it would give opportunity to help everybody and that's the ultimate goal, not to try to create a second board, it's to help everybody when the opportunity arises. And as we see the project we're talking about now, Riverwalk East, there's some funds that are being taken care of by the city and the, the CRA that, you know, there's got to be a way to figure that out, you know. that, you know, there's got to be a way to figure that out, you know, and do it properly. Because part of it, how much of the funding, Mr. Callahan, is CRA money for the public art? And how much of it is city?
There is no determination. I think what, well, what you do is you just say, it's going to be very easy. When, when it comes up, there is going to be seven and a half million dollars in that entire project, of which 500,000 is coming from the CRA. You just designate something that, that the 500,000 is going towards. Whether it's the boardwalk and say, money's going towards the boardwalk, which is going to cost far more than 500,000 dollars. You don't have to worry about how they're spending their monies. Their money is going towards something that is completely an asset, completely within the CRA, and not public art. Because the project is so much bigger. If it was close, if it was an 800,000 dollar project, and they were given 500,000, that's one thing, but the project is so much more massive.
So if we had one board that was working seamlessly and the different options, different ways, it would be easy then to say, do the public art. Doesn't matter how you cut the money, it just matters how you do it. And if, right now, then we need a public arts board for the council if all of the money is going in Riverwalk East coming from the council. And I'm not saying either way, I'm just saying we, we need to come up with a board that works for our city, and our CRAs are in our city.
I have a clarification too.
Yeah, it was, it was-
If I may, please.
I want to clarify, I did not intend for my comment to mean that public art can only go in the CRA areas. Yes, I want to see our entire city, and we do represent the entire city. I guess I'm having concern with, since most of the art seems right now to be in the CRA, that seems to be kind of where the concentration is. Yes, things can be outside of the CRA. What was the problem with that before? This, this board was working under the CRA, but they also advised-
It was only under the DDA, which only covered the two CRAs.
Right, I, I get that.
And so that's why there was never anything on the Central CRA?
And I understand that. That's why, I guess I would like to see this board, a great board created, so that it could make sure all of the CRAs get art. But I'm thinking, why can't this board also be used to select or recommend art for outside of the CCRA?
Because-
That's the whole purpose of this.
But it's still under the CRA.
They can.
I mean, you can use their expertise for the rest of the city.
They just have to get the funding from the city.
Right.
And then your funding-
That was the expectation.
So that's what, so you weren't saying just the board that was the city's public arts board that will look at the entire city, including the CRAs. You were saying that the CRA public arts board could assist with the city, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Or you're just saying you want one to just blanket it?
However, we need to structure it. I think to have two separate boards would not be smart.
I, I agree.
Hold on, Mr. Sanders, hold on.
I have a question for-
Are you finished, Mrs. Coachman?
Attorney Robinson.
All right, and I just want to say, that's exactly what I've heard the whole time, to have one board that can be structured. And when you said, how was it structured before, the CRA was a volunteer board that got appointed by the council, so the people were picked by the council, had an executive director, just like they do now, but the board was a different board. So they came up with a way to do things. Now, the city council is that board also. You know, you got to talk about the different things with different hats in different meetings, but I think we're trying to split hairs here, instead of have something that works for the whole thing. And I, it's, it's perfect, you have a good board. So, Mr. Roth was next.
Yes, okay. For starters, I find it ironic that we have, we have two high, high-level people that are leaving within a month. And, and we, we currently are just starting the budget process. We're trying to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to make, how we're going to handle this budget. I've been hearing, we've got, we've got to figure out what is the budgeting process is going to be, what the replacement process is going to be. We have a, we have a real serious issue going on at the city level right now. And here we are, for the second time, spending hours talking about public art. Secondly, in the, in, the current budget has no, the current city budget has no art funding, period. And, and I've heard where, we've been talking about sidewalks, which have been neglected for, let's say, at least 45 years, 50 years. We've talked about stormwater, you know, the need for stormwater, which is, it's going to be far more expensive than sidewalks. We're talking about adding a lobbyist, and I haven't heard anyone talking about raising taxes. Because this, these are, these are massive costs that are coming at us if we're going to do this. And no one said, well, we're going to raise taxes. I mean, I suggested a fee, I'm the only one. But, you know, so we have a serious budget problem, and we're talking about adding stuff to the budget. Well, why don't we just keep more pie in the sky stuff, just keep throwing it on there? Earlier in the meeting, we had, we're going to need, we're going to do away with the, we're going to, we're going to have to pull the ordinance for the second reading off, because there's a board in there, there's no need to maintain a board if you don't have to. I agree. Later on, we were talking, Mr. Callahan says citizens' boards are very serious stuff. That was your quote, and I agree, they are. We have a process here, where we've been doing this for years. This is, this is a formula. This is, the CRA has the ability to fund a person that we're talking about. The city doesn't. The CRA has that right now, ready to go. This discussion has already been had by me and, me and the director. This is on the agenda for the CRA. It won 15 today. So rather than, than be, just keep going on about, you know, stuff that we, we have no, no ability to pay for right now with the city budget, we just move forward to the agenda at CRA meeting and have this discussion in there, and see what, see if we like it. And that's the motion that I'm making right now, that we take this topic to the CRA meeting, and we have this discussion there, and if we don't like it, we can come back to this meeting. And that is a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, in discussion, Mrs. Coker?
Discussion? Well, one clarification, is the, before, as the boards were set up, and I can appreciate where Councilman Roth is coming from as far as the time that it takes, and unfortunately, that was very foreseen when you got rid of your advisory board, the DDA, because you took all of that process and pulled it into the, to the CRA board. And so it is, it's a lot. I, I think it's too much. I'd like to see the CRAs maybe have their advisory board, use them more for this kind of stuff. But that being said, before, the city council board could veto anything that the DDA board did, and the DDA board was acting as the CRA. Is that going to still be the, is that still the case, the way things are structured?
Sure. Sure, and nothing's changed, but, but as you said, the DDA structure has changed. I mean, you all are now-
But I mean, the CRA, if the CRA does something, then does, then does it come back to the full board? I mean, I, I don't like the way we sit as two different boards and the way the whole thing is.
Well, the, and remember, a few years ago, you all took the power, like you said, away, I mean, a lot of the independent power that that board had is now with the council, so I can't imagine that being a situation y'all would encounter, but you do have that right.
Mrs. Barnaby?
I guess my, this was brought up because we discussed it in a workshop. There seemed to be a great deal of consternation about whether it should have even been brought up in a workshop. So we have a member that's brought it forward in an official meeting to discuss this. I still find it difficult to understand what the problem is with having a public art advisory board that comes through all of the CRAs, but could still advise the city. That's where the crux of the issue is right now. And, Mr. Roth, if you're saying that when we get in, that, that you want to discuss this in the CRA meeting, are you objecting to the CRA Public Art Advisory Board, or whatever title we're going to give it, advising the city and the county on public art? Are you opposed to that?
No, no, I am not. The, the point, the point that I am, and, and, and to bring up Ms. Coachman's comments earlier, when, when, when the map was presented up to us of where all the public art is, yes, it is in, it's in two CRAs, it's not in, it's not in the CCRA. That is a crime. That so, and, and that, and, and when the city council became the, the boards, we also became not just the DDA and the Fourteenth Street CRA, which the Fourteenth Street CRA did not receive very much attention previously. It was, it was the downtown development downtown with very little efforts. The one thing that they did, and I will give them credit for, was buying up the Manatee Inns, which, which we'll be discussing. But, but we now, and have had for a few years, the ability to put public art in the CCRA, under, under the current rules right now. Now, there hasn't been a whole lot of CRA activity in the last few years. That's why we swenched from economic development back to straight CRA. We now have, the first time ever, we've hired a, a professional CRA person, you know, not an economic development person, or someone from sports management, or, or, or an engineer from. So we're now on the path of doing things correctly. This has been discussed. This is not, this, this has been, I, I've done, I've done research on this.
I, I just want to understand, and I know how much time and effort you've put into this. If you are not opposed-
No.
-to having this volunteer board advise the entire city, and if you read in here, if the county comes and asks for our help, they could, they could provide help to the county?
Absolutely. Well, I mean, we'll, we'll have to work out the details of that, but yes, that, that certain, because the one thing that we can do, and I've already, is, is going back to base, basically, when this was done, we had a person in YCO that, that we have the ability in a CRA to go ahead and do that again. So, so that's just a possibility there. The other thing I wanted to get into was the discussion about public art in private entities. They want to pick their own art. I talked to developer of Grand Palms. He said, look, it's my public art, I'm going to do what the heck I want, flat out. So just the fact that they're, I, absolutely-
Well, it's fine until if someone comes in and puts up something that might be not appreciated by our community standards.
Let me tell you-
Do we remember the penis tree?
Yes, yes, we do. And that was not, that was not, that was, that was not a corporation, that was not a corporation receiving tax dollars.
I'm not, I'm not being facetious here, people, I'm being very serious.
And, and we can have a, a well-run public arts board with a, with a, with a professional, and the developer can come in and say-
I will tell you later, okay?
I'll, I'll make my own, I'm going to, I'm going to pick my own art, I don't care what you say, that's the point.
But I agree with you, Mr. Roth, in that standard, but if we are going to give them some sort of benefit, we should have some say in the art, and that's what we're asking for. So if we give them an extra story, or we're giving them something to put public art, then they can't put what Ms. Barnaby just said. But, you know, but again, I'm putting what I want because I got, you know, I can do it. So I agree with you, and I, I think we're splitting hairs here, folks. And, and again, it's not that this council wants to be in charge of it, or, or I want to be the leader of it. I don't, I don't care about that part of it. I care about making sure we're covered and we look seamless when somebody comes, whether they're in the CCRA, CRA, DDA, or the city. And I do believe there needs to be a component somehow with the county, because sometimes you can live on one street, and the street across there is the county. So we are intertwined. Not to take away from anything that CRA is doing, because it's doing great.
Point of order.
I do it, so, yes, sir?
We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Yes, sir. And we're, in discussion, talking about it. So, Mrs. Coachman, did you have something else I didn't, okay. Anything else? All right, so we have a motion. Mr. Roth, would you state your motion, please?
It was basically that we're going to move this, that, that this, this topic is going to be moved to the agenda item in the Community Redevelopment Agency at 115.
Mr. Robinson, can we, that's just, is that anything that we even have to have a motion to do? It's just, it ends, so.
No, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, okay, so it can be a, yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. We're going to start the vote in Ward Two?
Sure.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Great discussion, and I do think that that's discussion that if we're going to have questions come up anywhere meeting-wise, it's good discussion to have. And thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Coker. All right, so council reports will start in Ward Five. You're first. It's called the Harold Byrd Rule, so.
Thanks, former councilman Harold Byrd. I only have a little to say, but first of all, great discussion. And, and it's also great to all be together again. Like, well, I shouldn't say again, because I've never been together. But as I viewed council on, on their recordings. I only have to say, in the past week, I received a great deal of citizens' input, and I engaged that. I really, I'm always happy for that. I always say you upset them, and then they'll get engaged and work with you. So I was really happy to see that, and I'm going to leave it at that today.
Thank you. Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, two, a couple of things. First off, I wanted to extend my condolences to two very longstanding families in our community. Ken Thomas passed away this week, and the SoCo's family, the, these are both patriarchs and very, you know, very loved families in this community, so I wanted to extend my condolences to all of them. I also wanted to get back to you at the last workshop, we had, you had said, expressed an interest in hearing the Baywater Report Card from the Executive Director of the Astuary Policy Board, and he is going to be here on June the ninth, so I think it'll be a great discussion. And then also, I would like to have a short discussion amongst you guys with vacation calendar for the Labor Day. We have, I, I would, I don't know if we will have all those meetings. We have the Wednesday before and the Wednesday after. We have council meetings, and I didn't know if anybody would have any, would have any intent to want to extend a vacation on Labor Day before or after, or-
Labor Day or Memorial Day?
Labor.
Labor Day.
I'm looking ahead.
Budget requirements.
Because it's one of those weird months where-
We have budget, mandatory budget requirements in the-
On which one?
September.
But we can do it in-
I'm not looking at the calendar, but we have, we have to have two budget meetings, 501 meetings in, in September.
Okay, hey, September. So Labor, Labor Day is the sixth, so we'll have a meeting-
On the eighth is what's scheduled, so I mean-
August 25th, and then September 8th are the meetings surrounding Labor Day, unless you choose to have a workshop on the first.
So, I don't know, I just wanted to put it out there to see if, because see, the 25th of August, we have a meeting, and a CRA meeting.
You've got, you've got 12, 14 days.
Oh, okay, I, I think I was looking at this.
Part of those budget meetings had to be on their own. We can't combine that with the others.
Budget meetings, no, they can be, they have to be just at 501.
So we can meet before and then close, and then open back up?
No, but the week, the one, the first is no meeting, correct? Is there a meeting on September 1st?
No, first.
Okay, then, then I can work it out that way. Okay. I'm sorry, I just, that was my-
Well, I, I at one point had a council workshop on there, but then it came back and said canceled, so I was just assuming that we were not having a meeting on the first.
Well, I think what happened was, we said, let's put them always on the first of the month, just to schedule it, but they don't always happen, so we looked back at it, and with that being, that does fall, because the first is a Wednesday. A lot of times you'll have two Wednesdays before you have a meeting, if it falls the right way, but unfortunately that would-
So we won't have anything on the first? That, that works. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Mrs. Barnaby?
I want to echo Councilwoman Coker's comments to the, it seems lately that we're losing a lot of individuals that have helped build the fabric of our community, and, and I guess that's a reminder to all of us that we need people to step up and start helping, because those individuals are now gone to glory, and it's not always easy finding someone that's going to step up with honesty and integrity. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Roth? Yeah. First up, this will be the last meeting that we're gonna have before school's out. So the little children are gonna be running around the streets. Everyone, please be careful, be alert. They tend to be a little more dangerous as soon as school's over. They, we've gotta watch the traffic. I know that there's at least one person on staff that's very, very excited. I know that my wife is beside herself, more so than the children, I'd say. Anyway, that being said, let's just be careful of, of, of the kids, especially the little ones. This being said, the, the council, you know, calendar is something that we set at the beginning of the year, with the exceptions of workshops. I, I mentioned earlier that I've always had an issue with workshops. I still have an issue with workshops. We're having more and more problems because of workshops where we don't know what, what, you know, is said, what, what, did we have a consensus? I don't know. Are you allowed to vote? No. It's so, my thinking, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not making anything right now, but my thinking is, rather than having council workshops in the future, I want to have the discussion of just having special meetings where the council can vote. If, whether we have a workshop or a meeting doesn't matter to me. I'm here in person. And I'd rather have the ability to vote and get it on records and maintain it. But I'm not, I'm not moving forward in that direction at this time. Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Couple of things. Mr. Brown, I want you to clarify. You said somebody in the regatta, had a billionaire wanting to take over the regatta. I hope you weren't referring to me, because I'm-
Yeah, that was you.
I'm the billionaire?
Right. I think, that's what I've heard.
I'll have to check, but I don't know why, yeah, that's-
Watch if Mr. Trump's under indictment.
Jesus. Oh, well, I better check my bank account, but, by the way, I was assigned to communicate with the promoter, and I've been calling and emailing, and I get no return, so, just FYI. This year will be my fiftieth anniversary for high school. You know, I thought that was for old people. Now I realize it's not. Yeah. We spend a lot of money with this recruiter, and I don't think we're moving forward fast enough. And we've always done this in the past. We've done a very good job with the council taking the lead on this. We're spending almost thirty thousand dollars. I, I don't know if we're getting our bang for our buck here, but I'd like to make a motion that council member Roth takes the lead on finding our city administrator, if I could get a second.
What, what, what do you mean by that?
I'm, I'm asking that a council member takes the lead on communicating with our outside entity that we're spending a lot of money on to select our process, select our, our list for city administrator.
I, well, for one thing, I want to say that it looks like Mr. Callahan is currently handling that and will be for another, till-
No, the, the council, you know, said that for me to deal directly with Colin, get the information and do that, and that's what, it's part of my comments to bring it up to solidify it by vote today.
When, when did that take place?
Well, again-
I, I assume it was under Mr. Callahan.
We've talked about it at a workshop, and you-
At a workshop?
That we talked about it, and we're bringing it up today to solidify it, so.
We did not talk about it at a workshop. You said last meeting, in the workshop, I think, that-
Well, let's hear from the other councilmen also, and see what they-
I can't finish. No? I'm asking permission to finish.
Finish, yes, sir.
That, you said you had, you offered to show it to me, that a workshop back in last October appointed you, which you, you weren't even on the council. So I don't know how that appointed you, but there was no workshop last October, and I verified that. There's been no, there's been no formal motion to select anyone. And that's my motion to select, because we've always used the council, because the council hires and fires department heads and administrator. That's always been the case. They set policy and hires and fires. And so I'm asking that a council member step forward if they'd like to do it, or I'm suggesting Mr. Roth, because he did that, a good job with our planning director.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna reluctantly second your motion, not, not because it'd be me, but I, I do believe that there needs to be a contact person on council. I, I wasn't aware that there was a, I, I thought Mr. Callahan was still handling this under, under the city administrator. I was not aware that we had any motion or anything to where it does, wasn't being handled that way. I, I don't care which council person it is, but I, I believe a council person should be appointed contact. That's a second.
Discussion, Mrs. Barnaby?
We were all in the workshop when we were discussing having the entity that we used to find our planning director work on finding us a city administrator. And we were all sitting there, and nobody spoke up, and nobody disagreed when it, when it was brought forward that Mr. Callahan and the mayor, as the chief executive officer of the city, was going to be dealing with, and I'm sorry, his, Mr. Basinger?
Colin.
Colin Basinger. I under, I understand that we're in a crunch right now, but you cannot not vet these individuals completely and thoroughly. And that's, I, I don't understand why you think that having a council member call Colin to say these things to him is going to make it happen any faster. And I will not be supporting this motion.
Mrs. Coker?
I, I ditto everything that Councilwoman Barnaby just said. And I, I just find it almost incredulous to think that it's gonna go faster if we change the process now. And, and I do remember having those discussions, whether it was a workshop or a meeting, I'm not sure. Do we have minutes from workshops?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so maybe we need to make those available.
And I was told there was no such-
But I distinctly remember-
That's the email.
Us discussing, and I'm almost certain I remember ma, the mayor saying, "Okay, is it your consensus that we do this?" Because there seems to always be a discussion later that we didn't have consensus, that he was going to reach out to Colin and was going to try to get this thing going quicker. So, you know, I am not in favor of changing the process at this point.
Mrs. Coachman?
I also recall at the end of a workshop or a meeting that the mayor was going to speak with Colin. I do recall that. We talked about how there were like over sixty or so resumes and la, 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 you know, all of that. So I do recall that.
And it's nothing, I'm not doing anything to guide Colin. I'm not trying to pick candidates. I'm just asking him and speed it up, and in the venting process, you know, he wanted to go a little bit longer on the interviews a few days. I said, "No, we need to move it up." And I talked to him the other day again and asked him to, if he can get to that process, to bring it a little sooner to us, to do that. And also, what I said in the last meeting, Mr. Sanders, was, "There's a City Administrator Senior Management Hiring Process Reference Guide dated October of 2020 that was given out to all the council." Three of us weren't here.
Who prepared that?
That was done, I mean, Sharon did it years ago.
It was done in 2004.
So you did get a copy of it, and you read through it, and I was just going by what's in the process.
That wasn't voted on.
Well, I don't, I'm just going by what the process is.
It was a, it was a process by an old H.R.
Okay, so-
Director that was fired.
Okay, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Robinson, and I had a discussion with Mr. Rudicel about this. Even if outside of this policy here, the chief executive officer in the city, which is voted by the citizens, is the mayor, correct?
Correct.
And-
That's not correct.
How is that not correct, Mr. Sanders?
There's no language that says you're a chief executive officer. It says you have general supervision over the employees.
So in the charter-
There's no reference to, just like there was no reference to police commissioner, but that was used for years. There's no reference to that.
Well, but still, is the day-to-day operations-
Day-to-day operations is, is handled by the city administrator with your help.
Again, our charter is what we're going by.
Charter will govern, whether, what language is in there.
Language in there still is the day-to-day operations and doing things. So again, we're, we've, we've going through, we're trying to help to speed up the process by doing that one-point person. And again, I don't get to vote. When that person comes, it comes to the council. So I'm trying to help all of you. And I am not, I mean, and I'm gonna go back to Mr. Roth. I think you've known me for eight years now.
No, you, you, you actually just made a good point.
And, and I mean, I'm trying to speed it up, and then gives you the opportunity as council to make a decision. Here's what co, we hired a person. I say we, I wasn't involved in hiring Colin, but we as a group hired. You are, we're, we're putting our trust in him. Great trust so far with Robbins hired.
Right.
So let him do his process, and, and then it'll be brought to you. And that's, that's, you know, what I would, would think that we can go forward on.
For clarification, though, Mr. Roth handled that.
Can I call the question?
Yeah, call the question.
No, I don't want to call-
So we have a vote.
Actually, actually, I'm gonna, can I, can I say, I, I made the second. I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw that second. So, because, but I'm gonna explain it. I was under the impression that Mr. Callahan was still acting as city administrator on this. I wasn't aware that in a, a council workshop, because this is the problem with council workshops, in my opinion, so I'm being said, if I don't make a comment, or I don't disagree, there's an automatic assumption that we, for all practical purposes, voted. I, I have an issue with that. I'd rather see, I'm gonna be in the future saying that, that we need to make workshops become special council meetings. There's no difference, it's no difference. We can, we can, we can hash things out. We can, you know, we can, if we have an issue that's long-term, we could table it. We could table it for two weeks, we could table for two months, we could table for two years. So, and, and, you know, but that, that being said, you make a good point about that you're, you're not, you're not voting on that. I'm just, because I, I want to keep the, 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 it is, there are certain things where, and, and you are the mayor, and, and you're entitled to talk to anybody you want. You know, that's just the way it is. I, I get that. So for me to say, you, I, I would never say that you can't talk to someone, you know. It's just, you're, you're the mayor, of course you can. I was just trying to keep us in the loop on the hiring process. But you made a very good point of you're not gonna be voting on it.
And I will keep you in the loop, and I will, you know my style about getting things quicker.
Okay.
And that's the goal, because again, I want to have an administrator on, and I want to, I want the administrator to come up with the org chart. And, you know, opportunity is here now to correct some things that we can move forward on in the way we have things done. And again, you're the ones gonna be voting on it, not me.
Right, so, so my second's been withdrawn.
Okay, so it's withdrawn a second. Mr. Sanders has a, a motion. Is there another second? Nope, dies from lack of a second. So I would like to then see if there's a motion to bring up to solidify that, since we're talking about it, that I will be the point person for this administrative process today. So I know that's what we had talked about, you know. So there is no further problems in the future if something comes up.
To bring all information to council for-
Yeah, to me, to come, me to deal with Colin directly.
You can't make a motion, can you?
I didn't. I said I would like to see if there's a-
I was gonna say, if we change the rules here.
I'll make that motion.
What's the motion? Can you state a motion?
Not the words, Beth. I make a motion to appoint the mayor to be the point person, to work with our hiring professional, and bring it back to council.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
So will council have full rights to intervene with the, what you call him, he's the principal, Colin Basinger, at any time they wish, if they have questions? Or are you prohibiting council from doing so?
I, I would, I would think that, I, I would think that since the, it's the city's monies that's paying paid for, I mean, not that, I don't have any questions. I might trust you, but I think, I think if someone contacts him, he should at least respond by email. I mean, I-
Right, but the question, he was getting confused because he was getting conflicting things, and that's where, you know, so it was, you know, it's always, it's a hiring process. You want one-point person and bring it. Now, if there's some reason at the next meeting you don't think I'm bringing you something, then bring it up. But I will bring everything, and there will be no, no, so-
Well, how about, how about you just give us a report at every meeting?
That's fine, yeah, that's perfect.
Well, the reason I brought it up is because I sent him an email that he was gonna get back with us the next day. And at the next meeting, you said it was gonna be two weeks. And then in the last meeting, you said it was gonna be end of June. So I felt, I felt that something happened that the process was slowed down.
No, that's incredible.
So, but, and he didn't respond back to me, so it, it made me suspect.
There's no, there's no timing, it's, it's on the chart, it's on the date, so.
So, so now, we're, we're at a, we're at a process where we're thinking it's an emergency, and we're out to June twenty-sixth.
No.
That's what I heard at the last meeting.
June sixteenth.
Sixteenth, all right. Got my numbers wrong. June sixteenth, which is-
That's when, that's when we want to have the, the interview process, the sixteen.
The five or six selections.
Yeah, to come, to come in when he comes up with a final list. And, and again, we've talked about this. He may have five or six final names, but it's only gonna be probably three that we interview, but that will be up to the council. That'll be brought to the council to decide, to bring people in. And, and even Colin, the reason he said he does five or six is because once you get to that, some of them might drop out.
Or they might have taken another job.
Another job at the time, right, so.
Well, I think he'd probably already done that, but that's my personal viewpoint.
So we have a motion.
He, he has a projection for June sixteenth. That's not a hard date.
Well, we're gonna have the, the five or six before that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, I think it was June fifth, June eighth, yes. So, and it's on the same schedule, but I think we've moved up the interview times.
Can we, can we, this was said earlier, Councilman Coker brought up, can we keep June's meetings at the ninth and twenty-third right now? Because that's-
I think that's what they are, isn't it?
That's what we have. I, I try to take my wife on a, on a week trip somewhere in June to, for reward for working all year.
So is that where we can keep that week of the sixteenth open?
I think that would probably be the one I'm looking at.
So I'll see if Colin can move it up sooner, because I don't think we want to go later.
Are you saying you're gonna wanna put a meeting on the sixteenth?
Well, no, that's when we would do the interview process, that's when-
Okay.
We were asked to hold the sixteenth.
For the interview process.
I thought you just said the eighth.
No, that's when he's gonna get us the six candidates, and then we gotta bring them in.
So, anyway, that's just-
The schedule that he listed was selects candidates for interviews on June eighth. June sixteenth, city provides, city tour impossible holds reception for finalists. June eighteenth was one-on-one and full city council interviews and decision. June twenty-first was city council selects an administrator if it does not so, does not do so on June eighteenth.
And what I asked him to do was move it up to June sixteenth to select. So that, that date is actually moved up. I actually asked him to move it up to June eighth, but he doesn't think it can be ready by June eighth.
Well, twenty-one works better for me, probably, than sixteen.
So let me see what, you know, because that's, then we would have to meet and then select. So, all right, I'll, I'll see if he can move up the interviews to June eleven, or June ten. So again, I've been pushing him to move it up, so. So, all right, we have a motion in a second to, to make the mayor as the point person in contact. If there's any questions you have, come to me. If there's any questions you have, come to me, I'll get the questions and get them, you know, in contact with you. Um, any further discussion? Not, we'll start to vote in Ward 3.
Yeah.
4.
No.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
Good. Motion carries four to one. Okay. All right, um, anything else, Mr. Roth?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I had the floor.
That was, that was Mr. Sanders.
No, we're, oh, I'm sorry, we did go to you, Mr. Sanders.
I had the floor. Uh, so it's been mentioned that, that some of this confusion comes through workshops and I, I'm agreeing with Mr. Roth. Workshops have become a, basically a city council meeting without the right to vote, but we're using the word consensus. And to me, that's a vote. If, if you say that there's consensus, we move forward on something, then we just voted without a motion and a second. So I, I recommend that we stop using that and I actually recommend that we stop, uh, workshops because that has been abused and I don't like it. So I'd, I'd entertain a motion that we don't have any workshops till further notice, if I could get a second.
Well, I hate to second this right now, uh, Mr. Sanders, because I was planning, I was planning on bringing this up at a later date.
And I, I have, obviously, when we go out and ask questions to the council, I think in the five months I've been here so far, I've sent out two questions of workshops. I have no issues if we have to call a special meeting to do it. I know one of the things that we've talked about over the time is you don't like to have that special meeting and then bring up stuff and then throw it in where the public didn't know what we were gonna talk about. So that's where we were able to workshop, wordsmith through some things and then put it on the next agenda so the public would have a chance to, to, uh, to do that. I think, Mr. Roth, you are big at, at that, not wanting to bring things up at a meeting and, and then vote on it before you had any public input. And so that's, so I don't think that our workshops have been anything other than transparent and I want to do ask the attorney, um, cause we have done this. There's been times when we brought up things at workshops and then we codified them at the next meeting. Is there anything illegal about that?
No, no. And I, I think that the problem sometimes you have when, um, you do something and it's, you gotta make sure at a workshop, and the reason why you can't take action is because it's normally a general topic. And so the public doesn't have notice on what you're potentially going to be doing. I legally don't have an issue with the word consensus. They're not, you're not taking a vote, uh, you're asking for consensus to bring something forward, uh, for another public meeting on that topic. So I have no problem. I know individual members may have a problem with that word, which is fine. I don't legally have a problem with that word. I don't believe it's, it's improper to use that word. Um, but from a workshop setting, that's why you have workshops, is to, is to generally discuss something, allow the public to give you input. And then at your special meeting, you could advertise it properly, have the proper ordinance so the, the folks can review it and come here for appropriate public comment during that publicly noticed special or regular council meeting.
But if we just have a special meeting to even meet, something could come up and get voted on that wouldn't be probably as transparent as we'd want it either.
It has to be advert, I mean, you gotta be careful because something has to be advertised and so if it's not properly advertised, you can't vote on it, so.
So the last.
Hold on, Mr. Roth had his hand up.
Well, I just wanna say that, so, well, I mean, I, so I was commented on, on that I wasn't ready to move forward on that because I, I, I do have issues, but I, I do, I do intend to have this discussion further. And I could just say at the last meeting, the last workshop we had, I had a citizen who watches what we do call me up over, uh, what, what was the top, what was the agenda item, long range plans?
Oh, okay.
And, and, and he basically was calling me out for what a, what a, what a bunch of crap that is, that that basically includes everything in the kitchen sink. And I mean, and I said, look, I, I, you know, I don't agree or disagree, but, you know, that's, that's not exactly an agenda item.
But it wasn't, it wasn't, it was a workshop just to discuss things, it wasn't anything to vote on.
So, but there are people, so, so that's what I'm saying is that, is that, you know, I know why we started workshops, how we started workshops. This is something where I think we've had more problems with workshops than we get. I'm gonna be moving forward on that. I'm not ready right now, but you know, you have a special meeting, it's done.
So we do not have a second?
Not have a second, so. Dies for a lack of a second. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
And so the last council meeting we had, that afternoon, within four or five hours, we had a workshop that was closed to, um, items to be put on the agenda and only one item. So I don't think that's fair to council, uh, to do it that way. So I'd like for CS have a, a better procedure on council being able to have their say and their voice on workshops or, and/or council meetings. Um, I, I, we do send out a notice on council meetings if you have anything to put on there by 4:30. Tamara does a good job at that. The la- the last workshop that, that didn't come, it was already set before, it was set within hours of after that meeting. So that, that's, that's a no-no to me. And, um, I'd like to also say that, uh, I'd like, when, when we have people that have a, an interest in something at a workshop or a council meeting, when they show up, I, I'd like to know, have an advance notice that they're showing up versus having 10 people out there that's, that's been invited by the mayor or anyone. For example, Mary Ann, you look with a frown, yeah, I think you, or maybe it was Jane, I'm not sure, invited a consultant for, um, State House and.
Uh, no, sir, I did not.
I don't know who invited him.
It was Jane.
It was Jane, all right, it was Jane. All right, I said it was you or Jane, so don't get all huffy. I, I understand.
Hey, hey, come on, let's, let's have some decorum here, please.
Well, we didn't have decorum last meeting when I was called a, I was called a what?
Yes, we did. We have decorum and we're gonna continue going forward, so.
It's funny, I get called out in decorum, but I was called an ass in the last meeting.
No, sir, you were not.
Yeah, well, it's on the tape.
No, sir, it is not.
All right. Well, moving on, uh, that's probably why they had a delay in the YouTube.
No, sir, it is not.
They, they didn't know how to.
Please, please, let's get decorum, everyone, everyone. Mr. Sanders, I'm doing everyone, please. You like to throw out bombs out there, but with no evidence and the evidence, nobody called you an ass. Bring it up, then if you have evidence of something, bring it.
It's on the tape.
And it's not on the tape.
It is not on the tape. I did not say that.
Yes, I did, sir.
What was said then? Oh, you're not gonna answer, I understand.
Because it's not on there. It's not calling you an ass.
Yeah, fat.
No, I did not say that you were fat either, sir.
I know.
You are, you are not saying true information at this point in time. And I have been very patient and I have not responded strongly. In my very first meeting here, you did not speak truthfully and you threw it at me.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It needs to stop.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm talking about you tell, saying I was not transparent and I had a conflict.
You did.
And I, I did not have a conflict and I still do not have a conflict.
You do.
I do not.
That's your opinion?
No, it's not just my opinion.
Okay, end of story. Mr. Roth, so, uh, have, have you been contacted by the citizens about the stench from Tropicana? And is that with your authority to, to look into with the DEP?
I have not been contacted by, by citizens. I did have a conversation with council and Marty about it and I intend to talk with both the DEP and someone at Tropicana about it.
Okay, so you are gonna, could you report back to someone, the mayor or myself or, or Carl or somebody so that we know? Because I, I get those calls just like Mr. Roth did. I mean, you know, all the time. And so I'd like to know.
Sure.
Where we're at, if somebody at DEP is looking into it, if they've addressed it or if it's, maybe it's not them, I don't know.
Sure, be happy to.
I'd appreciate that. And the other issue we had, we've had it for a couple of years. We had a boat that sunk in my ward over around 20th, 20th, 21st, 22nd Street. And I think you got involved in it with a little bit with, um, the Department of Natural Resources or whoever about pulling the boat out. We had approval to pay for that and lien the property, uh, last year. And then all of a sudden, the state got involved and I, I'm, I don't know if it's because we, of you having, being directed that way, but I don't know how they, they knew where the boat was because it was sunk and I, you can't see it from the street. So it's mysteriously, they, they, they got involved and they put a hold on it and it's still there. And the neighbors are complaining like, and, and pointing the fingers, is, you can't get nothing done either, can you? Well, not if the state intervenes, so, is that something that, I don't know, maybe you know a little bit about it? I know you, that you, Scott had asked you to look into it and they did address something. Maybe that's why they went out and did that, I don't know.
I, I frankly have a faint memory of its issue. If you can give me the address and the property owner, I'll look into it.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. I'd like to send along the condolences as councilwomen have done for the Skoko's family, the Thomas family. And I'd also like to, to send along condolences to a longtime friend of mine, Mr. Ed Dick, who passed away. And a lot of people know the, the Dick family in our town from the standpoint of what they've done for, um, adopted like eight children legally and then fostered hundreds of children through our community. And, and Joanne died a few years ago and, um, Mr. Dick died a few weeks ago and had his funeral on Sunday. And one of the things that, that 30 years ago, he made me promise him something that we did, cause I know if I didn't, he'd come back and get me, but, um, the, at his funeral, one of his adopted grandchildren said to him that, you know, how's it going? You know, you're married, kids, everything's great, but looked right at him and said, what have you sacrificed? And he looked, his grandson said, he looked at him and, well, grandpa, what do you mean? Goes, well, you know, you've got a nice family, you've got nice cars, you got a nice house, you got things, but what have you sacrificed? And, um, I do, I've gone to a lot of funerals in my lifetime and, and worked a lot of funerals, but that's something that hit me. When you look at, what have we sacrificed for what have we done? What have we helped others? Because Mr. Dick probably could have been that billionaire if he wanted to be, but he sacrificed his whole life. And I think that's the thing we have to be up here and look at and what have we sacrificed? And, you know, as we look out at the, the audience, as we look out on the TV, that's really a good statement and something stuck with me after that. You know, what have you sacrificed to help others? And, you know, we don't always have to just agree on things and we don't always have to disagree, but we have to get along and, and work together. And I think something you've seen, you know, so far from, from me is that we're gonna do that and we're gonna try to be fair. But you also have to look in the mirror at yourself and look how you're going to be fair and not always to, to throw things out there. And I think it's very important that we work together with decorum, our code of conduct. We've talked about an ordinance that, uh, I'd like to bring up soon. I'm just saying it now, we're not, not in a workshop, probably in a special meeting to talk about it or however we're gonna do it, but I'm gonna bring up some things that will keep us moving forward in a positive light and that's important to me. So just sending along all the condolences and, and obviously, as, uh, was brought up earlier, 50th year reunion, everybody's having different reunions, we're all getting older and unfortunately, things happen more as we get older and we gotta think about it, but, but I'm just gonna leave it, um, of what have we sacrificed? You know, and what have you sacrificed personally? And, uh, you know, that's something you have to answer. Um, one thing that I do want to do, and I, I guess we ended up having a, a, a vote on it, but, um, there was somebody in the audience that wanted to speak about public art, so I would like to have you come up and talk about it. Sorry that I missed that, got going through, but we appreciate you being here and sorry you'd sit through so long, so.
Oh, I don't know how to formally introduce myself.
Just say your name and your address. You have three minutes.
My address?
Yes.
Do I have to say my address?
Just say Brayden.
I reside in the Village of the Arts.
Okay, perfect.
My name's Erica McCready.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, I just had a little statement. Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak. Um, I just, I wanted to say that I appreciate Ms. Coker's sense of urgency to establish a more efficient way to create and complete public art projects. Uh, while I personally feel very passionately about public art, uh, it's been my observation that some people, uh, just appear less than interested. Uh, but I think one thing that we can all agree on is that, one, stimulating our local economy and two, the safety of our community are both very important topics. And so I just wanted to remind everyone that public art does generate traffic, especially foot traffic, which generates, uh, revenue for our local businesses and stimulates our local economy as well as creates a safer environment for our communities without having to utilize, uh, officers or police bodies. So in conclusion, I hope that what I've just shared reminds us that art is relevant and that time spent discussing or working towards a better system regarding public art is never time wasted. Thank you.
And thank you for coming and, and staying through the whole thing and commenting and we appreciate what you do in Village of the Arts. Thank you. All right, department heads, we'll start with Sharon.
I have nothing other than to apologize for my outburst. The credibility of my department's very important to me. Just want to be able to say that.
Thank you, Sharon. And I'd like to say something while we're there with you. Um, I said it in the workshop, but it's not on the, the television. You have announced your retirement July 2nd and from this position, as well as a councilman for seven and a half years, I'd like to thank you for what you've done for our city in 27 years and keeping things in, uh, straight and narrow at times. Sometimes we all ask you to push a little harder, but you know, we, you kept our city in a good place for 27 plus years and, and it's gonna be missed and, and greatly appreciate all you've done and I know your staff does as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Robin?
Um, I wanted to mention, I think there was a mail out regarding in satisfaction of our floodplain management requirements. Uh, you should have received it, um, as, along with the other residents. And it, uh, includes some important information about hurricane and storm prep, uh, preparations ahead of the storm and post-storm recovery, uh, including phone numbers that are important. So if you receive that, attach it to your refrigerator and, and keep it handy because I think as we approach hurricane season, it's gonna be important information, uh, to have handy, so.
Thank you. Chief?
Just want to give you a quick update on a meeting we had yesterday with Crawford Construction and Folly Bryant. Um, it's coming along, out there pretty good. They're a little behind schedule. Um, the trusses are up, uh, they're looking to probably dry the building in, you know, soon. And they're saying within probably the next couple of weeks, they'll have, they'll start interior framing. So it's coming along. I know there's setbacks right now is, um, material costs and, you know, subs and things like that, but, uh, they're working hard to kind of make up that time, so it's coming along.
Fire marshal slowing it down?
Yeah, he's, he's really the problem.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah. Chief, chief, I, I appreciate all you do. Um, I didn't talk to you, you're the only person I didn't talk to this past week about your budget. I assume it's, it's all done, submitted. Is there, is it, how's it compared to the previous year's budget? Is it about the same, more or less, or what?
It's slightly more.
Slightly more?
Slightly more, it's, um.
What would slightly mean?
You're looking at probably a 6% right now.
It's about 600,000?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not, I'll have to look.
And is that due to any, is that due to a capital project or what?
It is capital. Yeah, even our operating is a seven, right around seven.
I'm sorry?
So you're looking at close to, yeah, 600 for operating.
Well, what capital project? Is that, is that, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the fire station? That's, yeah.
No.
Equipment?
It's equipment. A lot of that's replacement equipment.
Replacement equipment?
Yeah. Some of that stuff's gotten old. Some of the stuff that we have, Hearst equipment, that kind of thing, we're just replacing. There's a few things. We can definitely go through it.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking for, I, I just, I just wanted to know how it compared to last year.
It is.
And you basically told me what it is and it's a capital. That's really odd. Yeah, I'm not trying to pressure you. No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Chief?
Good morning, everybody. I appreciated that you spoke a little bit about sacrifice as we come to the end of May. I point out that most of the folks over in Braynton, they all start the first day of the police academy and they sit down and they're asked if they're willing to sacrifice their life to protect somebody else. And so I have folks over there that, that do that day in and day out. And, and I appreciate you all recognizing us this month. And hopefully the numbers nationally will drop. They're at a very significant increase right now, but it's a dangerous job. And I appreciate all of them for what they do. I really just came with, with great news, but I won't bore you. I have, I have all these. My folks have to tell me some of the positives that they're doing. I will say that the mayor and I attended last Thursday, the 100 Club event. And that's an annual event to recognize the best of the best in our law enforcement. It's a competitive process. As you all know, I'm competitive. And I'm happy to report, I've been here, this is my fifth year. We've, we've taken it three of the five years now. We, we tied for the win. And so it was for Detective Michael Page. He won for his work dealing with child sexual predators. He, he does phenomenal work, is on a few task force. You all don't really hear about what he does because of what he does. But I was very proud of him and really all the folks that, that got put up for that. I don't know why I'm going to mention that. I'm just going to this one. I, I had a little note. One of our brand new officers, she's 21 years old, just hit the street, was driving down the road on her way to a call, saw a very, very pregnant woman on the side of the road with a flat tire. She got out and changed her tire for. I, I think I can probably leave it at that. I couldn't help but send her a note that said, hey, I just learned to do that. And she said, well, my dad taught me. Said it was an important thing to learn. I was just particularly proud of that. So I'll leave it at that. We also, I got a couple of other letters. Really, it was a great week for that. One of the, the things we did that was pretty cool, every year, we give out safety badges to the, to the middle schoolers, or I'm sorry, to the elementary schoolers getting ready to go to middle school. It really got derailed this past year because of COVID and, and whatnot. There was one school in particular, Bullard, what am I trying to say?
Ballard.
Ballard. I'm sorry, Ballard. I was trying to remember which elementary school. They, they'd been waiting all year patiently and finally they were like, when are we going to get our badges? Apparently it's become quite the expectation of these kids. And so with a week left, we went out there and, and did an event for them and handed the badges and my SROs out there bought them pizza. It was, it was really a, a great thing and really showed that connection. We've only been doing it a couple of years, but these kids have come to expect that if they do a great job, if they're role models, they wear that orange sash that by God, they're going to get to pin a BPD Safety Patrol badge on it. And I, I couldn't have been more proud of them. So that's, that's really all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Oh, yes, Mr. Sanders?
I don't want to leave you out. I did ask you about your budget too. And you said it was pretty, I don't think you, I asked you specifically if there was an increase over last year?
My, my operating costs are, are down. They're below last year's.
And, and no capital request? So you're pretty much, you're pretty much even with last year than you? That's good.
Well, what we don't know is what salaries are. And so we estimate that at 3%.
We don't know. Right.
Correct. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. In our weekly report, we indicate that we had a little bit of vandalism down at the, of all places, the skate park. And to that end, been working and we're trying to arrange a meeting for one evening next week where we're going to meet with some of the elder members of the skate park community to kind of touch base with them as it relates to some of the discussions that were originally held when the skate park was proposed, that they would provide some oversight. So we're going to take the opportunity with some folks from BPD as well to be at that meeting, to have some discussions with them and see if there's things that we can implement in a more formal fashion to help prevent some of the things that are happening down at that location. On a more positive note, we'll be turning the splash pad on at nine o'clock on Friday morning and it will stay on until there's some reason to shut it off. But basically it's nine to seven every day from that point forward. Also, in, in light of the good news that the chief is always able to provide, I'm happy to indicate that within the last couple of weeks, we had an incident with our landscaping grounds folks who were down at the Riverwalk doing their normal day-to-day activities. And they noticed an individual jump off the train tracks off of the bridge in the river. And that individual was struggling quite mightily, apparently not all that great of a swimmer, didn't necessarily judge things right. Managed to work their way over to the fishing pier. And two of our guys, Todd O'Donnell and Milton Aldies, were able to extricate him from, from the river and have a very grateful individual. And to that end, we've also now outfitted the fishing pier with a life preserver that wasn't there before, so that hopefully we're better equipped if somebody else decides to adventure into the river in the future. But just, we'll, we'll be recognizing those two individuals with our employee achievement award program in Public Works.
That's a good question.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Has there ever been any discussion? Because I take my grandsons down to the park and that, that one pier there has nothing on, for handles or anything. And it's my biggest fear that I'm going to be jumping in after one of them. I mean, is there any discussion?
No, I mean, that was laid out as, I mean, that's a, a day dock. Unfortunately, it's, it's flamingly underutilized, so there's never much of a boat presence there. But that's the way it was designed, intended for that.
Right at the children's playground.
No, it's not at the.
And I'm talking about the other dock.
The other dock has, the other is the fishing pier. That's located near the, that's near the playgrounds and that is outfitted with handrails.
Still afraid I'm going in one day.
Same question, budget?
Well, as I indicated to you, our, our budget, we included, it does include an increase and that is partially at the request of council where we have included additional personnel in multiple areas. We've also, as Chief indicated, made an estimate of what the increases will be for salary because our union is entering into a negotiation year and there is no set value for that. So we've included that. We've also included a, a number of capital projects, capital items associated with trucks. And basically, we have about a million dollars in solid waste vehicles. That's our moving forward. We have that built into our program for replacement costs so that we're, we're never in a situation where we're caught with our proverbial pants down trying to buy a bunch of trucks all at once.
So you haven't budgeted for council rhetoric, like sidewalks and that kind of stuff, have you?
All of that is included outside of our budget. It's, it's included as part of what Mr. Callahan and I have discussed, as well as has been indicated to you folks as it relates to half cent sales tax money usage. But, you know, we're, we're hopeful that it will be approved, that we will have a, a larger sum of money available for sidewalks so that we can make a dent.
I'm not asking for it. I'm just saying that sometimes if you're, if you thought that was a directive, then I would, you know, that, that wasn't a directive. That was just a discussion item. And, and we're getting funding, 11 million dollars from the cares is, is coming in. And a lot of that is infrastructure and a lot of that's going to be in your area.
And as I provided you, I have an extensive list of projects that I'm happy to spend all the money you give me on.
Well, we're, we're going to, I'm, I'm for suspending every penny of that. And then, then looking for what the city can do maybe out from that. But I think we're going to have a hard time spending that money. Yeah, I mean, it's allocated to 2024, but I think we're going to have a hard time spending that money. That's quite a bit of money and we, I'm grateful of it.
I, I don't mean to be trite, but I would not have any problem spending that kind of money. Trust me.
I know that. I, I agree with that.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
It's been my pleasure to, to join you all today. Scott Rudicell had a family, his son graduated from fifth grade, I believe, today. So he sends his regards. From a legislative perspective, I'm keeping Scott very busy. We passed around 275 bills that the governor hasn't all signed, but a lot of good stuff in his past legislative sessions, certainly. I know Mr. Sanders and I talked about some issues in, in your individual awards, but if you have any issues, feel free to call me on any topic that you may have. And I think every legislator should have to sit through a council meeting like this, just to understand the issues. You're the closest to the people. Not, not all of my legislator friends understand the, the issues you face. And sometimes we believe our judgment is better than your judgment and that should not ever be the case. So I know we have our differences from time to time, but I've certainly enjoyed today's meeting.
Thank you.
Well, you have some legislators up there that don't even have a city in their district, right?
That's true.
That's.
Yeah, that's true. They're proud of that. And frankly, they talk about eliminating more cities, which is terrible to think.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, I'd like to give you a budget update. Thank you to all the departments who have submitted all their information. There are a couple of departments that are down in operating expenditures. Police and Fire did a good job of limiting their additions. Overall, here's the status to date. We have approximately 9.6 million dollars of operating expenditures associated with general fund operations. And the increase requested through the departments is a little over a million dollars or 10.66%. Okay? That does not include several hundred thousand dollars worth of personnel requests. So we have our work ahead of us. I didn't want it to sound as rosy as it sounds like. It's, it's almost done. It is not. It is a serious work in progress. I'm working on every single day right now to try to get it in order. Reviewing, have not gone through detailed review of each individual line item, but there are some line items that may need to be cut, to be looked at, or increase in revenue sources to be able to pay for them. There are certain things that are coming up that we will not know until well after you have a new administrator onboard, which is the state revenues. Those things do not come in till usually July, sometimes even later, when they come up with their final revenue estimates. And for that, we use last year's estimates as, as an indication of value on those. I think we'll probably see the increases come back. We do not know for certain till you get that from the, from the state revenue. When, like I said, when they come out with those. We have spoken with the property appraisers and they're looking at about a five and a half percent increase, they think, in, but we don't hold them to that. We don't see any preliminary numbers till June 1st. So sometime next week, we ought to see that first run of numbers come in as to what they look like from ad valorem taxes. So Public Works has, has done a, a good job in making sure that they balance from revenues and expenditures associated with water and sewer. They have quite a few projects in there. So they've worked, I've worked very closely with Dave over all the years. And that is one piece that will be sorely missed when we move forward. It's not just me. It's not just Sharon. It is not just, we have Chuck coming up at the end of the year. We also have Dave Bochamp, who has been primarily the chief person responsible for the finances in the Public Works Department is going in December as well. So we will have some additional losses that will, that we will need to think about and have been talked about with the various departments as to where they are headed with these, with these replacements. We talked to Chuck. We certainly talked to Jim about how to, what do we do for the financial side of the Public Works. So we're well in process and want to make sure that there are people onboard well ahead of the time that those folks leave as to when it is, when it is, when it is time. And in those departments, there's no, there's no leeway. These are drop debt. These are drop dates and they have to be honored. They are, they are done at certain points in time. So we will need it to be addressed that. That will be from your administrator's standpoint because they are not department, some are department directors, others are not department directors' positions. So need to be, need to be figured out. But overall, I wasn't disappointed in the budget. I see, you know, a lot of it is in capital, not all of it's in capital. Like I say, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars in requests and personnel, which will need to be evaluated from your perspective, along with the revenues that are available to do that. So we'll, we'll work on it. I will have what appears to be probably a budget in order. It will have some donut holes in it as to, for decision points that somebody will have to make going forward. But it is 10.66% and on $9 million of operations is a lot of additional funding requested. So.
I have a question.
So please make sure, if you have questions, please come to me. I am the one who knows what everybody's budget is, not just their individual departments and how those fit in to the grander scheme, as well as the revenues. The only sources of revenues that are budgeted outside are Public Works. They budget their own waste, solid waste and, and stormwater budgeting numbers.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. And that million dollars doesn't sound like a lot to me, but being a billionaire, I, it wouldn't be, would it? The, the 11 million we're going to get, do you know when specifically, we'll get some specific numbers? It looked like the majority of it is infrastructure and I don't know what the majority means.
I want to make sure that everybody understands. The things that were passed out last week, when we talk about how it can be spent, those were the interim final information, meaning that department was, it's not final, but that department was asking for questions from people like us. Are there other things that you think this money should be spent on? Are there other options that we haven't considered as to how this money would have more meaning getting out there to, to the various municipalities? So with that, you know, we've reviewed that and looked at some opportunities that, that we have. And everything that we talked about ahead of time in workshop or in meeting, still appears to be on the table that we can spend it. So that appears to be in good shape. We have actually received our first tranche. The accounting department did a great job and finance department did a great job of setting up the accounts, making sure that the money is available and into us. So we have, what, 5.36 million dollars came in?
We got that this week.
And is it, is it earmarked in certain categories?
No.
Well, it's, it's earmarked as far as ARPA funds are concerned. It is not.
As far as what?
As the American Rescue Plan funds are concerned. It is in a separate fund, separated from everything else, waiting for instruction from the Department of Treasury as to how we can, how we have to report on it, how we have to report any interest we may earn on it. There's a lot of things that we have not learned yet from the department.
Right. I understand a lot of details.
So it is, it's in a separate account and, and it will stay there until we get direction as to how it's going to be spent or how we're going to earn money from it.
So we're going, must be going to get it in two increments?
Yes.
Because it's 10.6 million, 5 million. Do you know when the second one, indicated when the second one would come?
Another year or two.
Next year, following.
Oh, next, not till next year?
It was in the packet.
Okay.
It was in the packet.
That was in the 150-page packet?
Yeah, unfortunately. They, they want you to think that everybody's going to sit down and read that.
Well, I did read it. I must have missed that part. So, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't able to take the quiz and, and pass it. So just one more question and you can have. So we are to receive, and how much will we receive in funding for loss revenue, sales tax, et cetera?
It's all included in that.
I know, but you knew.
I don't picture, I did not picture that from a sales tax standpoint, we will have any lost sales taxes. I think our, and there's going to be very specific formulas as to how you calculate that, whether it's available to you at all or not. The place that I see potentially some money coming in is in our, is in our gas taxes. And, and, and that was probably the tune of 100, $200,000 that you could utilize that money to replenish some of your gas taxes, which goes towards funding the transportation department as well as paving.
So you're seeing 200,000? That's, that's, I assume that's priority in one, that we replace our revenue with, with that. You'll take that off the top and I assume you'll do that out of the 5.3 million now.
It comes out of the 5.
Yeah, it comes out of the 5.
That, that will come out of that. And so the rest of it is, is, you know, fair game. I got it. You didn't have a problem with us receiving it, did you, Mr. Brown? Because you said something about in the last meeting that that was a burden on our children's back or something about it. Didn't?
I said that.
You said that? Oh, I hope you, you don't feel that we shouldn't get this, do you?
Oh, I, I have a big problem with it. Yeah.
Oh, you do? Oh. Well, I don't, but it's, it's.
Well, it's pub, it's tax money that's going to have, I mean, those are, that's tax money. It's that, the federal government doesn't make any money. So they're taking our tax dollars. They're, they're incurring all this debt that our grandchildren are going to have to pay for. That's what I'm saying.
I, I concern that too. Last fighting the 20-year, two wars, but I, there's nothing I can do about that. But I'm going to take their money.
Well, we don't, I mean.
You know, that's in the best interest of the city of Brayton. I mean, we did, we turned down BP money. I remember a few years ago, I ran on that, campaigned on that.
I, I had nothing to do with that. So.
I know you didn't. You don't have nothing to do with this. I don't have nothing to do with this. I'm just saying that I don't, I don't want, I don't want us to feel, feel bad about taking this money.
I don't feel bad, but my point was, if, since we're basically spending their money from the future, we should make sure that we spend it on things that, that'll still be around when they're, you know, older.
I know. There were 20-some-year train in debt now.
I didn't say don't take it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all, that's all I wanted. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Rolfe?
Just a question on that American Rescue money. Is there, is there like any kind of clawback or cautionaries if it's not used?
If you don't.
We don't use it. You don't use it, you lose it?
If you don't use it, you lose it. And if you spend it wrong ways, you lose it.
With interest.
With interest.
That's my biggest concern.
But if you use it on things it shouldn't be spent on, you run the risk of losing it.
Every dime and I want to make sure it doesn't have to go back.
Yeah, that's why it's going to be easier to make sure when we get the final rulings that we are spending it on things that are clear cut. You can go through and try to explain yourself, but before you would spend that money, I think you would want clarification through the official department that the spendings are indeed qualifying before you go out and spend money that may be in iffy circumstances. I mean, I think one of the things that talked about was housing. There are certain things in housing you can spend the money on, but it may be that you want to make sure it's very clear and clarified that that was an appropriate use.
Well, and, and because there was once, the League of Cities fought FEMA money went out. This was happened, this happened about six, seven years ago. FEMA money went out after a big storm. And then FEMA came back to communities and said, we gave you too much money. You owe us like 24 million dollars. And it, and it was, you know, cities didn't have that kind of money. And they didn't even receive it because it went to citizens. So this is the type of thing, I just, there's a cautionary there that if you've been around long enough, that just because the money comes in, doesn't mean you get to keep it.
I might add that the county has hired a consultant to help them with their funds. They are very well versed or are becoming very well versed in exactly how to take it, spend it, report it. And they have. And they have that fallback, because it is extremely, as you saw, the interim report was 150 pages. It is a lot of work for a staff of five people in accounting. We may want to bring forward to you at some point, looking at using the same consultant.
The other thing on the budget, I want to make sure that everybody, I didn't want it to be not clear. $1.56 million or what it was, was, did not include any, not only did it not include additional personnel, it did not include the salary increases. So the salary increases across the entire general fund, even at 3%, is $600,000 or $700,000 with benefits, or $800,000 with benefits. So you add the $1 million on top of that, and they don't call me Dr. Doom for nothing. And probably the million-dollar reduction in interest revenues. So it is a, it is an uphill challenge this year to get these things taken care of in a, and as I want, from what I see, what you see out there, we are extremely fortunate as far as the financial impacts that COVID had on us. I mean, there are people, but there are municipalities that deal with the whole school boards, because there are not school boards. There are schools that are under municipalities and what they deal with. We have been extremely fortunate. The degradation of our revenues has been minimal. So we're very fortunate from that standpoint. So, but we will still have our challenges in this budget. Because I understand everything that is requested is needed from the perspective of the departments. But I've always said, because it's needed does not necessarily mean it can be funded. So that's what I leave it with, because those are the tough decisions that have to be made. When these things come up is what is out there? What are one-time expenditures that don't recur again next year? Hey, if we want to dip in reserves to take care of those because they are for long-term assets, more power to us. But not to dip into things that are going to continue to have that responsibility year over year. It can be a bit more of a difficult issue unless you know that you have recurring revenues to take care of those. That's what I work on. That's what I do every single year, this time of year. Like I said, people think I'm sick because I like budgets. The budgets are the thing that I pride myself probably in more than anything else here, is trying to get you through a budget that works for you and is sustainable.
Thank you. Chief?
Ms. Bryan, just wanted to clarify. I may have misspoke, because I want to make sure the rest of them heard the same thing I told you. We discussed the fact that my capital was way, way down. My operating was up slightly, but it's a wash overall. I'm down if you combine the two, which I kind of do when we talk about things as opposed to personnel costs. And so I just wanted to be clear on that.
I have another question for you. Since, have you received any money from CARES or anything for police working through this stretch of time? Have you already received money? And if not, then I think there's money in here to do that.
So we did receive some guidance on that from the governor's office. And we don't expect to see that as they work through the process until potentially in the fall. Some of the restrictions on it are that it has to be sworn personnel that were employed on or before March 1st of 2020. I've done the numbers. I don't remember them offhand, but off the top of my head, I think that excludes 22 of my officers. Because I had a pretty significant hiring, what, seven, 16, 17 months now, 18 months? And so that does exclude 20, you know.
We're going to have less ceremonies.
We are, we are two down right now. I'm pleased to say, but we do anticipate some retirements coming up in the next two months. But so far, we've gotten some direction on that, and they're trying to work through how that's going to go through. They're saying it's not going to come through the cities per se. They're going to come through the departments, which really means it's going to come through the city. So we'll.
So you should get some at Carl Command, answer that, and I think Public Works should probably get the most.
If indeed, when you decide to do something like that, you know, again, those are, those are, those guidelines are pretty strict as to who gets it, who doesn't. Were they forward-facing? Not back-office people? Who was at risk through all of it? You know, and that still needs to be determined. I just want to caution people, and I know it's very easy for us to get into this, that, but I think terminology is important. Just a reminder, the CARES Act is done. It's passed. This is ARPA, the Recovery Act Plan. So just, because CARES Act had different rules, very similar type uses, but different rules, different expectations, different reporting. This is ARPA going forward. So. And from my perspective, and I'm not going to get into it with Chief O'Rourke, capital operations doesn't make any difference to me. It's a dollar's a dollar that's being requested, and how do we pay for it?
And Mr. Sanders, you said CARES. This doesn't actually fall under either of those. This is the governor. I mean, it does.
Yeah.
Right.
I meant.
Right, I was just clarifying for you that what, I think what you just asked, this was what the governor just signed in here just last month. And so that's, that's separate and independent of any of this stuff.
Mr. Roff?
Yeah, so I agree with Mr. Callahan that we got through this pandemic. I, we're very, we're very fortunate. There are a lot of, a lot of communities that haven't, haven't done so well. But we're, we're not only doing, we're doing, I think we're thriving, to be honest. I'm surprised with the amount of building that I saw going on during the pandemic. The one thing you mentioned, Mr. Callahan, is I've been very proud of the fact that, you know, the whole time I've been in office for 14, 15 years now, is we've, we've left the reserves alone. We've always said they're for emergencies. I know that we used, we tapped in just a little tiny bit three times during the Great Recession, just a little tiny bit to balance budgets. It was, it was less than, it was, I think about $2.5 million. But if, if there's ever a time to where we're going to talk about reserves, I know that Ms. Coker has us, going to listen to Sarah from Bay Estuary about the stormwater and the dangers of that. If we're ever going to get into reserve discussion, there is a very well put together video from Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council that was done over the course of about a year with studies on the, it's called Phoenix Two. And it's about the, after the storm of what happened to Mexico Beach, and then what a storm of that same magnitude would do to Tampa Bay region. And it would scare the daylights out of everybody in this room. And those reserves would get us, basically just allow us to just, you know, hold our, hold our act together until things happen. Because it's, they're still, their, life is still not back to normal up there. And we've been very fortunate on that at front, and I hope that we continue to be fortunate. So just a cautionary.
Mr. Callahan, anything else? All right. Anything from the audience, anybody? I would just like to make a statement from, about our agendas. They do, we ask for everything in by Wednesday at 4:30 for the next agenda. There has never been, through my administration, that I've asked, and we send out emails. Tamara does a great job and has never tried to close anything, and there was a statement made that, that something came up. There's, you don't have to wait till Wednesday at 4:30 to do it. Do it anytime. Something comes up today that we want to talk about in a month from now. Bring it up, get it to us, and we can, because I know that's something we actually are searching out sometimes for agenda items to make sure we meet everything. So please, bring them up, and it's very open. Ms. Coker brought the other about the public art. Perfect. You know, it's discussion, great discussion. So that's there. Mr. Roff?
Yeah, you just reminded me. I'm sorry. I should have brought this up. The, there is going to need to be, on the next agenda, we have to get together with Mr. Rudicell, a resolution that needs to be changed for the CC, the Community Redevelopment Agency, the CCRAs Advisory Board. That there's going to have to be a change in a resolution. He suggested it just come back. So just, this is a formal request right now that you get together with him, because we can't, we can't move forward until there's a resolution change.
We'll make sure and follow through with that. Tamara's got a board in her office that puts things on it. So if you want it, you know, it doesn't have to be next meeting or what meeting, but get it to us, and she can get it on there. So I appreciate what everyone does, and then we're going to still work through. As I've said in almost every meeting now, please, as a council, talk to your department heads, which is, and if there's policy that you want to set or do, bring it up, and it can be discussed. So being nothing, we'll be adjourned.